President, I call the meeting to an end. All rise for the point of relief. Point of relief is the power of the United States. We shall walk up towards the stairs, one nation, under God, in the good will of the Lord. Welcome to the June 16, 2025, Acushnetown Meeting. My name is Wes Nagan, and I am the term moderator. I have been informed that the warrant has been roughly executed with return of service in the county of Naperville. We're going to start with some introductions, beginning with gentleman closest to me at the head table.
I'm Darren Klein, Kingborough Town Council.
Jamie Kelly, town administrator.
Jamie Velasquez, assistant town accountant.
David Warner, chairman of the board of selectmen.
Bob Pinkley, board of selectmen.
Kevin Gasp, board of selectmen.
Mike Boucher, chairman of the finance committee.
Sue Delgado, West chair of finance.
Pam Levante, town clerk.
I just had someone tell me that you people couldn't hear me back there. Is that better? Okay, and now with the school committee, starting with the gentleman closest to the hall.
Jesse Alons, the Goodman School Committee.
Melissa Cornera, Goodman School Committee.
Rhonda, chair of the school committee.
Ebony McLean, school committee.
John Howcroft, school committee.
And now the finance committee, if you please.
Pete Benoit, finance committee.
Eric Chu, finance committee.
Eric McGlynn, finance committee.
Good evening, Kristen Flynn, finance committee.
Bob Sage, finance committee.
Paul Adams, finance committee.
Lisa Olmosky, Tomlinson, finance committee.
Thank you. We understand and appreciate. You all have busy, demanding lives, and we thank you for your time. Each and every one of you tonight will have the opportunity to question, comment, amend, modify, and ultimately approve or reject each article in this $36.9 million budget and associated warrant articles. This is your meeting, your tax dollars. Your participation is not only encouraged, it's your absolute right. Excuse me, a few housekeeping items. Please note that the center floor is reserved for registered voters in town and Acushnet department heads only. Non-registered voters, visitors, observers are to be seated to the side of the center floor on either side. And to the non-residents, if you have not signed in when entering, please do so. Each registered voter tonight was presented with a green card upon verification of voting status. Those cards will be the only means of voting tonight when they is to be counted. Kindly silence all cell phones so as not to disturb the meeting. And please note the location of the emergency exit nearest you in the unlikely event we need to evacuate the building. And finally, the restrooms are in the hallway to my right. Now I'll go quickly through what I call a process summary. I won't be reading every article verbatim, but it will provide us summary of each, the full text is on the handouts provided to you when entering. If you would like to speak on an article, line up at the microphone. Non-residents will not be allowed to speak unless they are department heads, town employees, or a majority of the registered voters agree to let them speak. When recognized by the moderator, clearly state your name and town address before speaking. You have the absolute right to understand what you're voting on. Articles are written to comply with the law, and the full intent of the article may not be clear to you as well as to others. Everyone here is entitled to question any aspect of an article, and we will address every question answered. Procedurally, all questions shall be directed through the moderator to maintain the call and make efficient use of our time. You are to speak only to the motion at the moment. rude or disrespectful speech will not be tolerated. Direct conversations between participants will only be allowed if it serves to answer important questions and is deemed to be beneficial to the meeting's efficiency. Please remember there was a distinct difference between questions and answers and debates. All may speak on a motion as many times as they like, but no one may speak twice until all who wish to speak have spoken once. I do reserve the right to limit discussion once we reach the onerous point of repetition. Without objection, I reserve the right to recess at any point. Motions must be made to amend any item which we voted on, then we need to vote on the article as a whole. Motions to amend must be in writing and signed above your printed name by the proponent. This is to ensure accuracy and compliance with the legal requirements of town meeting. When an article has multiple line entries, I will read each line item individually. If you wish to discuss any line item, please raise your hand and state hold when I read that line. We will return to that item when all have been read. You need not identify yourself to hold the line item, but be prepared to comment on it when we return to that line item. Now let's get down to the warrant. Article one, to see if the town will accept the reports of its officers, boards, departments, committees, and commissions as printed in the 2024 annual report or act on anything relative thereto. This will need a majority vote. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to accept the reports of its officers, boards, departments, committees, and commissions as printed in the annual report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance committee recommendations.
Finance committee voted unanimously to pass this article.
There any discussion? There are no discussions, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article one? Those opposed? Article one passes unanimously. Article two, see if the town will raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum to pay bills from prior fiscal years or take any action thereon or in relation thereto. This article was inserted at press time to pay last year's, uh, last fiscal year's bills. They have since been paid, rendering this article moot. I would need a motion to postpone indefinitely.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to postpone indefinitely Article two.
Any discussion? There are no discussions, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of postponing indefinitely Article two? Those opposed? Article two is postponed indefinitely unanimously. Articles three through 10 is what is known as a consent agenda. There are a number of articles that are routine annual articles enabling the town to conduct its business. Again, Articles three through 10 inclusive. This is being done for the efficient use of time. I propose we vote on them together. And again, if you wish to discuss an article individually, raise your hand and state hold when I read the article. We will return to that article when read. Again, you need not identify yourself to hold it, but be prepared to comment on it when we return. We will then vote on the consent agenda in its entirety. Article three, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of sums of money from the PEG that stands for Public Educational and Governmental Access and Cable-related Fund, a sum of $240,000, with expenses of public access as follows. Salaries and wages, $100,000; general expenses, $90,000. Cable reserve fund, $50,000, for a total of $240,000. And this sum be raised by cable franchise fees and related revenues, $240,000 total, or take any other action thereon. Is there a vote? No, I'm sorry. We'll take a motion at the end. Article four, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to apply for state or federal grants and to expend any monies received as outline in the appropriate grant application, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. Article five, to see if the town will vote to accept and expend any sum or sums of money that may be available from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Transportation for Chapter 90-type construction improvements and/or reconstruction of public ways and associated equipment, and to authorize the board of selectmen to enter into contracts relative thereto and to appropriate said sum or sums in anticipation of reimbursement from the Commonwealth, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. Article six, see if the town will vote to accept and expend any fair share amendment funds that may be available from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for construction improvements and/or reconstruction of public ways and associated equipment, and to authorize the board of selectmen to enter into Commonwealth or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. Article seven, see if the town will vote to authorize the town treasurer with the consent of the board of selectmen to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of the revenue for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2026, in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 4, and to issue a note on hopes as may be given for a period of less than one year, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 17, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. Article eight, see if the town will vote to authorize the members of the cemetery board to farm work in the cemeteries and to allow the board of selectmen to determine the compensation to be paid to said members, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. Article nine, see if the town will vote to authorize the members of the recreation commission to farm work in the park and to allow the board of selectmen to determine a compensation to be paid to said members, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. Article 10, see if the town will vote to allow the board of library trustees to sell for the sum of one volume of discarded books and periodic books of the Acushnet Public Library to the friends of Acushnet Public Library, a nonprofit library support group, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. Again, under the consent agenda, annually recurring articles may be grouped together for passage, and all of these articles appear each year in the warrant. For housekeeping items, this will take a majority vote. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move Articles three through 10, the so-called consent agenda, as printed in the warrant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance committee recommendation.
Finance committee voted unanimously to approve Articles three through 10.
Any discussion? Let's put it to a vote. All those in favor of Articles three through 10? Those opposed? Articles three through 10 passes unanimously. Article 11, see if the town will vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half, set the limits on the total amounts that may be expended in fiscal year 2026 from each of the town's revolving funds established under the Acushnet General Bylaws, Article 21, revolving funds, and set forth below, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. Again, I will read each line item. If you would like to discuss any one, just raise your hand and state hold. You need not identify yourself to hold, but when we are done with all the line items, we will return to any held item. Then again, revolving funds, we authorize to spend public works department, $10,000. Conservation commission, $5,000. Soil boy, $20,000. Parks and Recreation Commissioners, $12,500. Council on Agent, $45,000. The public library trustees, $6,000. And the reason the Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, mandates the reauthorization of maximum expendable amounts annually by town meeting, this will take a majority vote. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town fix the maximum amount that may be spent during fiscal year 2026 for the revolving funds established for certain departments, boards, committees, agencies, or officers in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 43E, what one half, as described and printed in the warrant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance committee recommendation.
Finance committee voted unanimously to approve this article.
Any discussion? There are no discussions, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 11? Those opposed? Article 11 passes with opposition. Article, excuse me. I then advise my town council to declare a two-thirds majority on Article 11. Articles 12 through 22 are summarized in the warrant before Article 12 for your review. I will read each article individually. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash, otherwise provide the sum of $30,000, for the board of selectmen to fund fiscal year 2026 engineering consultant services for compliance with the general permit for discharges from the municipal separate stormwater system known as MS4, mandated reporting and filing of associated documents, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. This will take a majority vote. The MS4 general permit permits cities and towns within the Commonwealth to operate a municipal stormwater system. These are regulated by environmental protection agents. This permit means that residents, businesses, developers, and industrial facilities shall only discharge clean stormwater. The town is responsible for ensuring nothing enters the system that can pollute our streams, rivers, and lakes. EPA has annual reporting and testing requirements that require municipalities to engage engineering firms and expert consultants to assist in complying with the MS4 requirements. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town transfer for free cash, a sum of $30,000, to fund the cost of the fiscal year 2026 engineering consultant services for compliance with the general permit.
Do I have a second? Finance committee recommendation.
The finance committee recommended this article unanimously.
Any discussion? There are no discussions, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 12? Those opposed? Article 12 passes unanimously. Article 13, excuse me, to see if the town will vote pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, to fund the Stormwater MS4 Stabilization Fund for Stormwater Management Operations and the cost of services for compliance with the general permit for discharges from the municipal separate stormwater system, and by transferring from free cash to a sum of $70,000 to said Stormwater MS4 Stabilization Fund, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. In order for the town to provide the increasing cost to comply with the MS4 permit, including annual reporting and testing requirements, the town has established and funded this stabilization fund to assist it in contracting with appropriate engineering and other consultants. With this transfer, the MS4 stabilization fund balance will be $103,607. This will take a majority vote. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town transfer from free cash to a sum of $70,000 to further fund the Stormwater MS4 Stabilization Fund.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance committee recommendation.
Finance committee voted unanimously to approve this article.
Any discussion? There are no discussions, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 13? Thank you. Those opposed? Article 13 passes unanimously. Article 14, see if the town, yes? There was? I'm sorry. Article 14, see if the town will vote pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, to fund the compensated absence of stabilization fund for the purpose of paying future liabilities due any employee of the town upon the termination of their employment, and to authorize future payment of accrued liabilities for compensated absences due any employee of the town upon the termination of their employment from the stabilization fund for accrued liabilities for compensated absences. By transferring from free cash, a sum of $50,000 to said reserve fund, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto, this will take a majority vote. Municipal employees are eligible for payment of unused paid time off, both sick and vacation. This is the only funding source outside of the departmental operating budget. This fund allows the town to proactively plan for retirements. It will allow the town in the future to provide for retirement obligations outside of the operating budget. With this transfer, the compensated absence of stabilization fund balance will be $132,635. Within five years, retirements will create a liability that will be too large to be absorbed by the operating budget. Increasing the balance of this fund over the next two to three years is financially prudent. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town transfer from free cash to a sum of $40,528.17 to further fund the compensated absence's stabilization fund, and to transfer from free cash, a sum of $9,471.83, to the fire permanent salary account for the purpose of paying retirement sick leave buyback.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance committee recommendation.
Finance committee recommends this article unanimously.
Any discussion? There are no discussions, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 14? Those opposed? Article 14 passes with opposition. Article 15, to see if the town will vote pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 5B of the Massachusetts General Law, to fund the health insurance stabilization fund created for the purpose of paying for future costs associated with employee health insurance and health reimbursement accounts, and to transfer from free cash, a sum of $150,000, to said stabilization fund, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. Again, this will take a majority vote. The towns continue to have a negative premium to cost ratio as a result of many catastrophic cases. Health insurance provider continues to predict large future increase in health insurance costs. It's proved a business practice to establish a health insurance stabilization account to assist in spreading out these costs, and with this transfer, the health insurance stabilization fund will be $371,855. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town transfer from free cash, a sum of $150,000, to further fund the health insurance stabilization fund.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance committee recommendation.
Finance committee recommends this article unanimously.
Any discussion? There are no discussions, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 15? Those opposed? Article 15 passes with opposition. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash, a sum of $100,000, to the OPEB trust account. OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Employee Benefits, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. The town has an OPEB trust account created to enable the town to adopt best practices and comply with the reporting requirements of what's known as GASP 45, which stands for the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. Said monies to be invested and solely utilized for payments to defray the cost of the town's OPEB liabilities. The town benefits from this as it shows financial responsibility and stability to bond and credit rating agencies, and reduces the future fiscal impact on the operating budget. With this transfer, the balance of the OPEB trust fund is $1,670,725. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town transfer from free cash, a sum of $100,000, to further fund the OPEB trust fund.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance committee recommendation.
Finance committee recommends this article unanimously.
Any discussion? There are no discussions, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 16? Those opposed? Article 16 passes with opposition. Article 17, see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash, a sum of $100,000, to the general stabilization fund, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. According to municipal finance best practices, excuse me, the town needs to maintain an amount equal to 5% of the total projected general fund operating revenue for the next fiscal year in its unrestricted stabilization funds, but less than 15%. With this transfer, the general stabilization fund will be at $4,9463. Keeping the fund at this level will assist the town in maintaining its bond rating, showing financial responsibility and stability to bond and credit rating agencies. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town transfer from free cash, a sum of $100,000, to further fund the to further fund the general stabilization fund.
I have a second.
Second.
Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee voted unanimously to approve this article.
Any discussion? There are no discussion, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 17? Those opposed? Article 17 passes with opposition. Article 18. See if the town will vote to transfer from free cash to a sum of $200,000 to the capital expense infrastructure stabilization fund, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. This will take a majority vote. According to finance best practices, the town will add $200,000 to the capital expense infrastructure stabilization fund to defray future infrastructure repair, renovation, and construction costs, as well as engineering and planning expenses. At the prior town meeting, the town voted to use up to $600,000 from this fund for the Slocum Street project. With this transfer, the capital expense stabilization fund will be at $633,296, continuing to assist the town in maintaining its bond rating by showing financial responsibility and stability to bond and credit rating agencies, as well as reserving funds for future major capital projects. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town transfer from free cash to a sum of $200,000 to further fund the capital expense infrastructure stabilization fund.
I have a second.
Second.
Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends this article unanimously.
Discussion. There are no discussion, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 18? Those opposed? Article 18 passes with opposition. Article 19. See if the town will vote to transfer from free cash or otherwise provide the sum of $9,109.28 to the opioid special revenue fund, original source of funds from the opioid lawsuit settlements, cleared and certified as free cash, but restricted to be used for expenses for opioid-related programs, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. This will take a majority vote. When the town receives funds from the opioid lawsuit settlement, it's deposited and rolled over to free cash. Once certified as part of free cash, it must be transferred to the opioid special revenue fund before it can be used. The funds must be used for opioid-related treatment programs. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town transfer from free cash to a sum of $9,109.28 to further fund the opioid special revenue fund.
I have a second.
Second.
Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee voted unanimously to approve this article.
Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, Tom Farland, Knight-Ludlow Street, Mossfield Fire and EMT. I have an amendment to the article. In working over the weekend with the finance team on with the town, the actual amount that we need to transfer to make the opioid special revenue fund correct is $9,104.90, a difference of $4.38. I have it in writing for...
Could you repeat that figure for me again, please?
Absolutely. The correct amount should be $9,104.90.
Nine zero?
Correct.
We're gonna take that as a friendly amendment, and I'll just put it up for a vote if there's no further discussion.
Mr. Moderator, I'll second.
No further discussion, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of reducing the amount to $9,104.90? Those opposed? Article 19 passes... It passes with the amended amount of $9,104.90 with opposition. We need to vote the amended amount on the article. We just voted on the amendment itself. So once again, all those in favor of Article 19? Those opposed? Article 19 passes unanimously. Article 20. This is a lengthy article. I'm going to paraphrase it. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from free cash to a sum of $30,000 to fund the youth employment service program. Participation in the program shall be limited to residents of the town. They'll be compensated at a rate of $15 an hour for a maximum of $4,000 per county year, as subject to both state and federal taxes. And participants will be selected on a first-come, first-served basis by the board of selectmen. The youth employment service program was a new program in fiscal year '24, designed to be a companion program to the very successful senior tax work-off program, but focusing on youth employment. It's designed to instill work effort while providing financial and social benefits to resident youths, including the co-op program for accursed Old Colony students. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote Article 20 is printed in the warrant into fund said appropriation, transfer from free cash to a sum of $30,000.
I have a second.
Second.
Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends this article unanimously.
Any discussion? There are no discussion, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 20? Those opposed? Article 20 passes with opposition. Article 21. See if the town will vote to transfer from free cash to a sum of $275,000 to fund the partial repayment of the school roof ban. Ban stands for bond anticipation note. Or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. This will be a majority vote. This partial repayment of the note made of the town to retire the bond anticipation note next fiscal year, and they leave the town at the cost of converting the ban to a regimented bond borrowing instrument. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote Article 21 as printed in the warrant and to fund said appropriation, transfer from free cash to a sum of $275,000.
I have a second.
Second.
Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee voted unanimously to approve this article.
Any discussion? There are no discussion, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 21? Those opposed? Article 21 passes unanimously. Article 22. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer $665,000 from available free cash for any or all of the following capital improvement projects and purchases, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. This will take a majority vote. I will read each request. Again, if you'd like to discuss, raise your hand and stay hold. When all been read, we'll return to any held items. You need not identify yourself to hold, but be prepared to speak on it when we return to it. Fire department. Purchasing installation of new compressor for filling SCBA bottles. I asked what that was, and those are oxygen tanks, I'm told. Not to exceed $80,000. Compressor's over 15 years old, obsolete, and not able to fill the bottles to capacity. IT, information technology. Update hardware, software, and printers. Not to exceed $40,000. Police, police cruisers. Not to exceed $150,000. The annual cruiser purchases were suspended last year, and they were to be reinstated this year. Department of Public Works. One street sweeper, not to exceed $275,000. Replace the present equipment, which is in disrepair. Accounting. Services to update the chart of accounts, not to exceed $30,000. The present chart of accounts is not compliant with the Uniform Mass Accounting System. Council on AID. Install four HVAC units to complete repair and updates of the system. Three 100,000 gas furnaces, a four-time AC condenser coil, and one 60,000 gas furnace. Two AC condenser coil units, not to exceed $40,000. Our existing units there are not functioning properly, outdated, and beyond repair. Town buildings. Purchase a used truck for maintenance, not to exceed $45,000. The present vehicle is unsafe and unable to plow. Town court. Request for general code compilation update, not to exceed $5,000. Update town bylaws and regulations. This article funds the various departmental capital projects and equipment purchases from free cash. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 22 is printed in the warrant and to fund all items, transfer $665,000 from free cash.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends this article unanimously.
Discussion.
My name's Jason O'Leary, 14 Brookside Drive. I have concerns about the IT, the DBW, and the town building appropriation. My daughter's in middle school, and we're talking about laying off 10 teachers, which I guess have already been done, at the sum of around $700,000. And I'm bringing here that we want to update hardware, get printers, get a new street sweeper, a new town truck for $45,000. And we're talking about laying off teachers here. So I disagree with these expenditures. I disagree that... I've never seen a street sweeper in 10 years in the 10 years that went in the cushioned. I'm not sure why we need to spend $275,000 for when we're laying off special ed teachers. This is near my heart. My daughter is in special ed, and for those who don't know, a majority of what they're laying off is special ed. So I know there was discussion at the school committee meeting. I know that there was a back and forth, and I oppose these expenditures, especially when we're laying off peoples. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee. Can the town administrator just quantify what free cash is supposed to be used for? I.e., is it something that is recommended to be used for an operational expense?
Free cash is designed to be used for capital expenditures, one-time expenditures. If you use it for operating expenditures, it's built into the base, and then it has to be put in that base every year subsequently.
So any money that we move from free cash is going to be built into next year's budget before... But I mean, let's say it went to the school department, that would be part of their base for the following year?
Yes, and we would have to find revenue to justify it. That's continuing revenue.
In addition, moving forward year after year, we're now increasing the amount of that liability because of increases in wages, health insurance, and everything else, which is the reason that we don't use it for operating budgets and only for capital expenditures, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, that's the guest.
To further try to clarify the town administrator's responses, if you use one-time revenues such as free cash or stabilization, when we try to set the tax rate in the fall and a tax split in the fall, we won't be able to do it because we can't make our budget, because we're setting the confines of Proposition 2.5. So what the town administrator is basically saying to you is we'd have to continue to use a free cash money or stabilization until both sources are depleted to nothing. And then at some point, whether it's five years, three years, depending on the amount of money, you'll be out of that one source revenue, and the townspeople will be forced either to A, to do an override question at a special town meeting on the ballot, and if it's rejected, the cuts then will be devastating to the community. So that's why it's not recommended. The board of selectmen won't be able to set tax rate in November because we gotta work in the confines of Proposition 2.5. This year, we're raising $561,000 of Proposition 2.5 levy increase. Every year over year, we raise roughly an additional $20,000 in the Proposition 2.5 levy increase. We don't have the capacity to do that if you try to use free cash or stabilization or one-time revenue. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Is there any further discussion?
Hello? Hello. Same line I'm thinking as earlier. Town doesn't seem to have as much money as we'd like.
Excuse me, sir. Could you clearly state your name and town address?
I, Andrew Travis, Noyah Street.
Thank you.
Going through everything, again, town doesn't have as much money as we'd like. I went through all the line items. They do make sense to me with the cost, and I do appreciate the want to purchase a used truck, the street sweeper at up to $275,000. I did recently see a very nice street sweeper truck at the Tuncher Truck. Very nice. I don't see a need for it in the town. I do see a need for up to a smaller amount for something of that nature. I was wondering if it would be possible, when we do vote, are we gonna go line item by line item? Or are we gonna need to approve everything in one sweep? If we need to approve everything in one sweep, could it be broken up, the line item by line?
I can divide the question, and we can vote on each line item separately.
Okay. Awesome. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I think the gentleman that just came to the microphone was solely sparking, talking about the street sweeper and the amount of $275,000. So the DBW director, Mr. Blad, came in and made a presentation to the board of selectmen on a street sweeper, and that is roughly the cost of a new street sweeper. Right now, we do not have a street sweeper in town, and we've had several people from the areas of the community last year in the fall complaining about leaves all over the streets, but we didn't have a street sweeper because it's broken down and it's really old. I don't think that we were jumping up and down to buy a street sweeper, but I think the majority of the people in the community would like to see their street swept, including the sand and debris, when need be. So that's all I can say about the $275 that was given to us, and we actually seen it with our own two eyes, and that's roughly the cost of a street sweeper. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I may. When the Finance Committee went over these items, especially the street sweeper, you know, we took into consideration the cost. But this is really, number one, a public safety issue first. With a lot of motorcyclists out there, bicyclists, and with this new law that gives bicyclists, you know, more area to ride their bikes, it's a potential liability as well. So number one, it's a public safety issue, and it's potentially a liability for the town. And we don't want to see anybody get hurt, get hit by a motorcycle when they're on their bicycle trying to ride through town. Or worst-case scenario. And if that happens, you're talking potential liability lawsuit. And if that happens, you're talking potential liability lawsuit, maybe. Six, seven figures. I don't know. But we're just trying to do the best we can. And so the first gentleman that spoke with regards, you know, to your child having special needs, I know exactly where they're coming from because I've been there and I'm still there. My son went through the school system. He had special needs. And it is very difficult being the parent of a child with special needs. Nobody will know what it's like until you walk in our shoes. That being said, we do have an entire town to run here as well. We can't just think about the school department. There are other departments that we have to take into consideration. So it makes our job very difficult. We're not trying to take away from anybody, but we're just trying to think about the entire town. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Rudy Batello, one eighty-five Pennsylvania Road. I just want to clarify. So after the town administrator explained free cash, she said it can only be used for capital expenses. I just want to be sure that there was nothing in the school's budget that could have been spent through free cash, right? There was a capital expense that could have preserved a teacher or teachers?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Higginson.
The line item budget for the school is entirely controlled by the school committee and the superintendent. The Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee wouldn't know if there's any capital expenses in the individual budget. And any appropriations in their individual budget is handled by the school committee and the superintendent's recommendation.
Does that mean we can't get an answer to that question?
You have to ask the school committee.
Hi.
Patrick McIntyre, two twenty-eight Prospect Street, East Massachusetts. I am also the school business manager. The line item budget which the Select Board and Finance Committee received would include detail on capital expenditures because we have a compliant chart of accounts. But we do not budget for capital items in our operating account. So that is correct. There are no capital items in our operating account. On the occasion that there are savings at the end of the year, we look at small capital projects, and that is the extent of that. They are never budgeted for.
I don't think so is the answer. So there's not a single item that could have been to a free cash? I couldn't really hear a direct answer from you.
There are no capital items budgeted in our operating account.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Any further discussion, sir?
Good evening. Donny Williams, one Main Street, First Pole. I appreciate all of taking the time to be down here, or paid, unpaid. I know there's a lot of volunteers here, and all the inmates as well. I appreciate your time. We'll leave with that. Was going to speak a little bit later on, and I probably will, except I just want to start with, all of you just came up with a little stabilization fund. It's been a lot, a lot of talk lately about stabilization fund, about free cash, budgeting, so on and so forth. I get it. My truck just broke down. The transmission fell out of it, right? And then we have an issue that's going on here, okay? We're trying to fix the issue for right now. What you're saying is you cannot budget, right? And pay out of savings for a continual budget item. That's more akin to if I now take out a loan or pay my Comcast bill every month on my savings account. It's a bad idea. You can't do that. You can't pay one for bill out of savings. Totally get it. I understand that. The question I really had is this free cash. From my understanding, all free cash items, the two twenty-five, two seventy-five for the street sweeper, the thirty thousand dollars for the youth program, awesome stuff. From my understanding, our free cash comes from when you men and women budget an item, when it comes under identity, due to very good physicality of all of you, that extra money. Or we budgeted two million, like I said, one point seven five, we have some extra money that is now free cash. That's my understanding, okay? So that means that next year, if the items are properly budgeted all across the board, then you will not be concerned about public money out of savings. What I'm trying to say is the money is physically there. We're being told we're broke. Hurt. Or is that that meaning, right? False worship meaning, we're being told we're broke. There is no money. There's four million dollars in the savings account. We're not broke, right? Six hundred plus thousand dollars, three sweeper. I mean, we heard discussion about bicyclists in the middle of the road. Valid point, right? Absolutely valid point. But if my roof has a leak or foundation mishap, it's not really something bad. It's not pressing, okay? There is plenty, plenty of money that's there. My concern, walking in tonight, I said, that's what committee made as well, is that knowing how much money there is and how good a job everybody here has done being physical exertive, this is like a choice. Somewhere in here, between all the communities and all the people, somebody sat down and decided, I have four million dollars in the account, but we're all going to spend one fifty-five. So notice, stabilization fund, as mentioned about percentages, has to be over ten percent, five percent, so on and so forth. I just read some quick numbers, okay? The amount of money that would cost to cover those teachers, right? You would still be well over ten percent in a stabilization fund. And again, I get it. You cannot budget every year on the savings account. What I'm saying is, we need to get the money tonight to fund the teachers for one year. So all these men and women, go back to work, fix the budget, take ten grand from here, fifty grand from there, a hundred grand from there, and fix the act of issue.
Sir, sir, as I may, you're going beyond the scope of the article.
Point is.
What's before us is to request funding for these items.
Point, point is. And regardless, reach me for it. Point clarity. Do we physically have a street sweeper? See, that's your question, because I heard we do and we said we don't have.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
We have a street sweeper that is in complete disrepair at the town line. Does not work. Multiple parts are obsolete, which is why the request came forward.
Okay, so we physically have it. It's just broken.
It is twenty years old.
Okay. It's fine, point clarity. We said we didn't have one. We do, it's just broken.
We don't have a functioning one, just to clarify.
Point is.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
I just got a final personal privilege and clarification from the school committee. I've heard, I heard gentlemen say that there are ten positions that are being zeroed out, but I've also heard that that's not the case, that when it's all said and done, between retirement, teachers go to other districts. What is the net-net? So just we can all play from the same sheet?
Good evening. Paula Bailey, one Chairman Avenue, Darby. School superintendent. At this time, it's my understanding that there are two positions, two people, actual people who do not have positions with the school department at this time.
So not the, not the ten?
Not the ten.
Not the ten, okay. I just want to make sure we're all, we understand this gentleman.
Margaret Vera, twenty-three North Street. Ten positions were cut. Ten positions will not be filled next year. However, because some people got laid off and decided to go get another job somewhere, or because some people left for whatever reason, positions reopened. If you have the same license, you can teach in that position. People have been moved around. But ten positions will be cut. There will not be a reading interventionist. There will not be a kindergarten sped teacher. There will not be all those other positions that you've seen. There will not be a second gym teacher. All those ten positions are gone.
Miss, excuse me.
Two people.
You're, you're not exceeding the scope of the article. Did the school committee, the school cases?
Came up. Ten positions are gone. And two people, there are two people that are still left without place to go. But those positions are gone.
Thank you. Getting back to Article twenty-two, I didn't hear anyone hold any particular line item. Now, I don't want to reinvent the wheel, but we're going to vote on article in its entirety unless someone wants to hold one of these line items.
Vote D B W.
Vote the street sweeper.
Okay, we're going to vote. We are going to vote on Article twenty-two, everything except the street sweeper. All those in favor? Those opposed? Article twenty-two passes with opposition minus the street sweeper.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, we're going to, just doing the math, the new figure for Article twenty-two appropriation will be three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, not six hundred and sixty-five thousand. Mr. Gassman?
Mr. Moderator, I think it's important for town meeting members to, to... What is, what is the objective? I mean, I know they just held the street sweeper perfectly fine. No problem about it, right? We will be without a street sweeper. We'll figure out something different. But what is, is there an objective to holding two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars?
The objective is if this town is so broke that we can't afford education for special education children, that I guess we have to make cuts in other places. And we're determined, right? That if we're so broke, we cannot afford two teachers or ten teachers?
Sir?
And we're just strapped?
Sir?
That's our objective.
I totally, I totally.
You are beyond the scope of this article.
I totally understand you, yeah.
I apologize. I was only answering the direct question, but I have a line item. He asked.
You're out of order. You're out of order, sir. Kindly silence yourself. We're discussing the street sweeper, not the school department.
Mark Quagener, eight seventy-three Main Street. Husband and Melissa are on the school committee. I'm concerned with this free cash. She answered her question for me. Nobody's talking about the mold in the schools anymore. It's like an old topic. Wouldn't this free cash go for that? And why would we do a sweet? You're talking about people getting sued for a motorcycle thing, right?
You're out of order. We are not discussing school department.
I'm asking about the street sweeper. Is that what you're talking about?
Okay, what's your question about the street?
You mentioned the street sweeper. We're worried about people getting sued if a bike goes down. What do we do if the school or the mold, people get sick? Lawsuits for that, we're going to do with that.
Keep your comments to the street sweeper. This is not about the school.
It's not about free cash. It can be used for the mold in the schools. Yes or no? It's a simple question. You answered that?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Higginson.
Any department in this town can submit a free cash article for capital expenses to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee for review through the town administrator. So any department in town submits articles to us, such as the D B W for a street sweeper, fire department for their compressor. These are all submitted by the individual departments. So yes, sir, it could be used for that. It would have to be submitted by the department requesting it.
As a selectman, are you concerned about the town getting sued with mold in schools?
Mr. Quagener, I understand your concern. I've been very vocal about the concern and in agreement with the concern, but this is not about the street sweeper right now. I answered your free cash question. I understand your concerns. We're not talking about what our concerns and liability are. We can speak after the meeting if you'd like.
Yes, sir.
Brandon Chandran, Boston, Brooklyn. Sorry. I think the discussion that's happening among the body here is that we drive by police cruisers, and we drive by fire trucks, and we drive by schools. And in the five or six years I've lived on Boston, Brooklyn, I think I've seen a street sweeper one time. So if we could have some kind of guarantee that my street would be swept once a week, once a month, heck, even once a year, I think people would see what they're actually paying for. And two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars seems a bit excessive for something I've seen once in five years.
Okay, folks, we're going to put the request for two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the street sweeper to a separate vote. All those in favor of the street sweeper? Those opposed? Thank you. Think we're going to take a count on this one? We're going to need to, we're going to need to count the votes on this one. Would you? No, I want the people that approve it with their... Thirty-three on each side?
Two to go after that.
Yeah.
Okay, those opposed? Could we ask Ms. Liz Weaver to approach the dais plate? The street sweeper request for $275,000 fails by a vote of 113 to 66. Article 23. See if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law Chapter 59, Section 5N, inclusive relative to a Veterans Tax Workoff Program, to be administered through the Veterans Office, the Assessors Office, and the Treasurer Collector's Office, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. This require a majority vote. Except... Excuse me. Accepting the provision of General Law will permit the town to establish a Veterans Tax Workoff Program similar to the Senior Tax Workoff Program. It's designed to provide financial and employment benefits to both veteran homeowners and town government. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I believe that the town vote to accept the provisions of General Law's Chapter 59, Section 5N, as well as the provisions of General Law's Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 220I, which provides annual cost of living increases to the benefits provided by Section 5N.
We'll have a second.
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee voting unanimously to approve.
Any discussion? Oh, just to clarify, it's Section 5, Clause 22I, not 220. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 23? Those opposed? Article 23 passes unanimously. Article 24. This is a lengthy one, but I'm going to read it its entirety. See if the town will vote to transfer $200,000 from the EMS receipt reserve account at the borrow of a sum of $650,000 to fund the purchase of a pumper engine with 1,000-gallon capacity and a 1,250-gallon per minute pump under and pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 7, Paragraph 9, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town thereof, provided that any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, unless any such premium applied to the cost of insurance of said bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 1, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. And further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take any and all actions and intervene and execute any and all agreements and other documents as may be necessary or convenient to effectuate the purposes of this vote. This will take a two-thirds majority vote. The present equipment is consistently in disrepair, and repairs are becoming too expensive and not economically advisable. We'll have a motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that $850,000 is appropriated for the purchase of a pumper engine with 1,000-gallon capacity and 1,250-gallon per minute pump, including the payment of costs incidental or relative thereto. That to meet this appropriation, $200,000 shall be transferred from the EMS receipt reserve account in the treasury where the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow $650,000 on the General Law Chapter 44, Subsection 7, 1, or any other enabling authority, and that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out this project.
We'll have a second. Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends this article unanimously.
Discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Gassman.
Just so town meeting knows what we're taking, the 200 and I think, what was it? $200,000, the first $200,000 of the $850, it's coming out of EMS reserve receipt account. What we would do is, we wouldn't ask you for a debt exclusion or an override, however you want to look at it. And we would fund it in future years. We would do the ban like we did on the school roof to pay off that $1.3 million. We would take it out of EMS reserve receipt in equal amounts moving forward so it wouldn't come on the backs of the taxpayers. It's out of EMS reserve receipt accounts. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. Remember that it takes a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor? All those opposed? Article 24 passes unanimously. Article 25. See if the town will vote to appropriate a reserve from fiscal year 2026 Community Preservation Fund estimated annual revenues in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for administrative expenses, preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year 2026, as well as administrative expenses, $13,000. Historic resources reserve, $26,000. Community housing reserve, $26,000. Open space reserve, $26,000. And the undesignated balance of the Community Preservation Fund, $85,000, for a total of $176,000. On the next page, you will see the project request from the Community Preservation Committee. Again, I'll read the line items. If you'd like to discuss one, stay at home. When all is done, we will return to any held items. Again, you need not identify yourself to hold an item, but be prepared to speak on it if and when we return to them. First request from the Town Administrator for administrative purposes, $13,000. From the Town Administrator, relocation of historic memorials at Russell Library, $60,000. Historical commission, the painting and reservations for the rear of Long Plain Museum, $5,830. The Park Department, for park improvements, $8,000, for a total of $86,830. This article ensures that the Cushinget's Community Preservation Accounts are compliant with the Community Preservation Act, which requires a certain portion of the CPA funds set aside for open space projects, community housing projects, and historical projects. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee reserved from fiscal year 2026 Community Preservation Fund estimated revenues. From FY 2026, estimated revenues, $13,000 for administrative expenses. From FY 2026, estimated revenues, $26,000 for historic resources reserve. From fiscal year 2026, estimated revenues, $26,000 for community housing reserve. From fiscal year 2026, estimated revenues, $26,000 for open space reserve. And from CPC unrestricted revenues, $85,000 to unrestricted reserves. And further to fund from the recommended funding sources, the recommended community preservation projects set forth in the CPC table and other expenses as printed in the warrant, and to have the Parks Department projects set forth in the CPC table, the purpose of improvements to full park.
We'll have a second. Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee voting to approve this article unanimously.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 25? Those opposed? Article 25 passes with opposition. Article 26.
Mr. Moderator, I move to table Article 26. Second.
Okay, there could be no discussion to table this, but it will take a two-thirds vote to table. All those in favor of tabling Article 26? Those opposed? Article 26 is tabled by two-thirds with opposition. Article 27. See if the town will vote to approve and fund the memorandum of agreement amending the... Please change your Article 27 to a one-year collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Acushnet and the International Association of Firefighters, or take any other action thereon. They just agreed to this contract this afternoon, but it's a one-year, not a three-year. This will... Article will ratify and approve the memorandum of agreement that amends and extends the one-year collective... One-year collective bargaining agreement with IAAF firefighters slash EMS for one year. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote Article 27 as printed in the warrant and to confirm any appropriations to be made as part of the operating budget set forth in Article 31 to fund the first year fiscal year 2026 cost items contained in the new collective bargaining agreement.
We'll have a second. Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee voting unanimously to approve.
Under the motion, that would be what we call a friendly amendment, it's a one-year agreement. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 27? Those opposed? Article 27 passes unanimously. Article 28. See if the town will vote to approve and fund the memorandum of agreement amending the three-year collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Acushnet and Teemstis Local 59 Police, or take any other action thereon. This will be a majority vote. This article will ratify and approve the memorandum of agreement that amends and extends a three-year collective bargaining agreement with the Teemstis Police for another three years. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote Article 28 is printed in the warrant and to confirm any appropriations to be made as part of the operating budget set forth in Article 31 to fund the first year fiscal year 2026 cost items contained in the collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends this article unanimously.
Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, as the Board of Selectmen's representative in negotiating this contract, I'd like to publicly thank the Teemstis Union and the men and women of the Cushinget Police Department. We came to an agreement that was fair for both sides, and I greatly appreciate the efforts, not only this year, but in our previous negotiations as well. Thank you, and I'd like to thank my board members as well. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 28? Those opposed? Article 28 passes unanimously. Article 29. See if the town will vote to accept the provisions of the Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40, Section 13E, or any amendments thereto, and in accordance with such law to transfer funds potentially available from fiscal year 25 of Cushinget School Department funds to the School Special Education Reserve Fund. So the reserve fund does not exceed 2% of the annual net school spending of the school district. The reserve funds to be utilized in the upcoming fiscal years to pay without further appropriation for unanticipated or unbudgeted costs of special education and recovery high school programs, out-of-district tuition or transportation, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. This will require a majority vote. This allows the town to reserve for future special education purposes amounts equivalent to receipts received from Fable and Bedford for out-of-district special education provisions or such other funds as may be appropriate. The monies in this fund cannot be extended from the School Special Education Reserve Fund without the approval of both the School Committee and the Board of Selectmen. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote Article 29 is printed in the warrant.
We'll have a second. Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee voting unanimously.
Discussion?
Patrick McIntyre, 228 Prospect Street East in Massachusetts, School Business Manager. I just want to provide clarity for the town residents on this article. This is to help take care of costs associated with severe special education students that we would not be able to otherwise take care of in-house. Out-of-district tuitions are set by the Operational Services Division of the state and can easily exceed $100,000 for tuition alone and $60,000 plus for transportation alone. Every year, we don't know who may move in or out of our district. We try to contribute as best as possible in our operating budget for those expenses. But given any chance that someone may move into the town over the summer or during the school year, and these expenditures are unforeseen, this stabilization fund provides us the opportunity to fund the needs of these students without having to go to a special town meeting or to ask the Finance Committee or Select Board for further free cash. So I just wanted to clarify that point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 29? Those opposed? That one opposed over there? Article 29 passes with opposition. Thank you. Article 30. See if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to enter into an energy savings performance contract with train in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 25A, Section 11I, for a term of up to 20 years for defined energy management service projects in Acushnet Elementary School and Albert F. Ford Middle School, under which energy savings resulting from the installed energy infrastructure and efficiency projects will be guaranteed by train for the term of the contract as required in Mass. General Law Chapter 25A, Section 11I, or take any other action relative thereto. This will require a two-thirds majority. This article allows the Select Board to enter into an energy management services contract for projects identified in trains investment grade art. The benefits of the contract include full turnkey design, engineering, construction, commissioning, and performance guarantees, and provides specific engineered solutions designed to enhance energy efficiency, operational performance, and environmental quality at Acushnet Elementary School and Albert F. Ford Middle School. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote Article 30 as printed in the warrant to further authorize the Select Board to enter into a lease purchase agreement as necessary.
We'll have a second.
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee is recommending to defer until we receive further information relative to what is in this article. For example, costs, term, finding energy management services in the contract.
Any further discussion?
Peter Bruneig, 29 Gabriel Farm Drive in Acushnet and Finance Committee. The Finance Committee deferred on this and didn't take a position because... The Finance Committee deferred on this and didn't take a position because when we're looking at the article the way it's written, it's allowing the School Committee to enter into a contract, not to negotiate, but enter into a contract for up to 20 years, and there is no limit or restriction to the amount of money they could spend under that contract. There's also no guarantee of any percentages of cost savings from any contract that they enter into. And I don't think it's frugal for the town to be allowing any department, regardless of which one it is, to be able to enter into a contract without a check and balance to determine what the cost of the town is actually going to be.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Brinoy, understand your concerns. This article only authorizes the Board of Selectmen to enter into an agreement. We still have to go through the terms of Train. Ultimately, we come down to a vote in the Board of Selectmen whether we enter that agreement. This does not authorize any funds at the moment. This doesn't authorize anything other than allowing us to enter into the contract. Mr. Moderator.
If I could just provide some additional clarification, Pete, just so you understand.
Yeah.
Shortly after I took over as Chairman of the Board, I was approached by Superintendent Patrick and Mr. Hood, and we had a meeting to talk about this article, and they assured me that there was no dollar attached to this, but what this would do would preserve our right to work with Train, right? If we found additional outside funding sources, whether it be for free cash or at the ballot or what have you, this would essentially negate the reason to start over, but essentially just preserve all of the work that we had done prior to. This preserves our right to engage with that contract. It doesn't mean we have to use them. We can get out of it, but this just preserves our right. This is more the mechanics of it, and so I just want to make sure that you knew that it was vetted at my level and subsequently with our board members, and we felt that this was a safe route to take on behalf of the town. You know, the issue was raised earlier. What are the selectmen doing about coal? What are we doing about air conditioning? This is one, you know, this is one action that we can take and we did take to ensure that we were part of that conversation and had at least some tools in the toolbox to address the issue.
Okay, I appreciate your clarification, just so that you know, when it came to the Finance Committee, it was our understanding that it was the School Committee that was making this, not the School Committee in conjunction with the Board of Selectmen. That is a check and balance for me. I would draw my.
Fair enough. It was their request. It did come to us ultimately, and we discuss it when we're going over the articles.
Yeah, that's a request for the check and balance. I'm perfectly fine with it. That is great. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, if I may, one more time. There's also a stipulation involved with the investment grade audit that protects a project that the school is actually capable of self-funding involving refrigeration that's built into the investment grade audit, so this would also protect the opportunity to make sure that we can take care of the refrigeration product as well, and the school, Mr. McIntyre, put a lot of work into that, and that could possibly jeopardize fixing that as well.
Catherine Mooker, 19 Gene Street, and I think some of my questions have been answered already, so I was asking about the scope of this article. But I wanted to know if any contracts would be voted on in the future, like specific language by the School Committee? You all, would there be public comment available?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Dave.
I would assume that any contracts that come before anybody in town, even if we enter into an agreement with them, any contract would have to be presented to the School Committee, and in order to sign off on any contracts involving financial aspects of anything in town, it has to come in front of the Board of Selectmen as well, so that, and the Finance Committee. So there would be multiple steps involved to make sure everything was only up and up. Usually starts with the businessmen who are at school, the superintendent works its way through the School Committee, then works its way through the process.
Okay, and I guess, question kind of on the scope. So if Train recommended replacements in upgrades, would that be like in the scope of the contract, or is it just design additions?
So this agreement speaks to the investment grade audit. Mr. McIntyre, remind me how many pages that is?
400 plus.
Right, right. We'll say 450 pages. This allows us to enter into any aspect of that investment grade audit, not necessarily the whole thing, but we can go through it and actually have the agreement in place so we don't have to start this whole process all over again. I haven't read the entire 450 pages. I've got through quite a bit of it. There's a lot of information out there, and I believe it's still on the school's website so you can see the scope that they put up for it.
Thank you.
Then, if I may, if any dollar appropriation is necessary down the road, it would have to come for your approval at town meeting.
Thank you, Moderator. Just, I mean, look, I don't think anybody's doubting that there's an air quality issue, right? It's just how do we identify the funding source, right? Is it either a debt exclusion vote? Is it a combination of existing funds? And somebody talked about free cash and free cash, right? We're trying to put that puzzle together. Is it in phases? We don't know, right? That's what we're trying to do, is that we want to be solution-oriented. School Committee suggested a route of funding, which was to put it on the ballot. That was rejected, so now we've got to go back to the drawing board to identify the funding source. This at least keeps us at the table to have discussions. It's a good faith effort by the Board of Selectmen that we're not rejecting the proposal, you know, for political reasons. Well, the voters voted it down to that, right? We're still in the game. We still want to have the conversation. I think this was a good faith effort to show that to you all. Oh, man. All right. Let's find that again. Third time's a charm. Patrick McIntyre, 228 Prospect Street East in Massachusetts, School Business Manager. I apologize for redundancy. That was already, you know, eloquently spoken with Chairperson Monar and the Select Board. But the purpose of this article is truly to leave the door open, to answer some of the questions related to this article. Any governing body can enter into a three-year contract without vote. The unique opportunity under this chapter 25A allows us to enter into a 20-year contract and leave the door open. That could be 20 years of doing absolutely nothing, or that could be 20 years of exploring a project, two projects, three projects, four projects, 100 projects. The important piece is there is no funding tied to this vote, as the moderator just spoke upon. That would have to come separately if we were to ask the town for any appropriation. The other unique concept to this contract is it allows us to chase after energy grants, which is at the forefront, you know, of the state right now. It's not strictly capital projects. It's energy-related projects. We actually secured a $500,000 grant because of this being an energy-related contract that we otherwise wouldn't have been able to secure through just normal capital projects. So at the end of the day, it leaves the door of opportunity open for the town, for the boards, and for the residents to pursue solutions to our aging and failing infrastructure. Thank you. Mr. Moderator, if I could just take advantage of this thoroughity to say this. I mean, look, I think we're going to get to a point a little later in the meeting when we talk about school-related issues and budget issues, but I can always speak for myself, but I know my colleagues on the board are pretty consistent. When there's an issue that deals with the school that requires an up and down vote from the Board of Selectmen, I think we've been pretty consistent in being supportive of that, whether it's going back to COVID, how we appropriated OPA funds, school roof. We did that without even stroking a check to the taxpayers. We did it with solar revenue that we generated that we fenced off because we were being really cautious about how we spent that money. Just the article before that, right, the stabilization account for special needs. We're there for you on that one, and this one as well. So I guess that's, remember that as we get down into the conversation and fingers start getting pointed as who's making the decisions or who's doing whatever. The board, when it comes to a vote on school-related issues, we've been pretty consistent in being supportive of the school department.
Alex Knox, 95 Perry Road. I'm all for fixing the air quality in school, but I do not think it needs to be done through a decarbonization program, and I also think that there should be some other contractors with proposals before we just sign into a contract with one company.
Again, this doesn't require us to go with this company. I think there's going to be an ongoing discussion about ways to remedy this, but there's a lot of work done with this company, so we just don't want to give that away. Thank you. If you have suggestions, we're all ears.
Thanks, yours.
Hi, Jolene, 111 Quaker Lane. I do have a proposal for this article that we use this energy money to kind of kill two birds with one stone, one idea, right? Okay. So why don't we use our free cash, right? It's free. Why don't we use that to get the mold out of the gym and put some solar panels on the roof of both, all the buildings? So then we'll get some energy money from that, too. Maybe something to consider to put into the proposal, like new roof, energy efficiency, kind of add that in. Could that be a thing or not?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Dave.
100% good ideas. Anything involving jumping into a project like that is going to involve procurement. So we couldn't actually just vote for that to happen tonight? There would have to be actual price votes and everything put together for that, and there's a whole lengthy process, but buy rights, free cash can be used to fund portions of projects like this.
So also, that I talked about four million dollars in the savings.
Yes.
That sounds like free cash to me, too.
Yes. You're leaving the scope of the article. We're here to talk about an energy savings contract.
And I was talking about solar.
We're not talking about solar. We're talking about the energy savings contract.
Mr. Moderator.
But I say yes to the contract. I'm agreeing with that.
Correct, but the Mass. General Law restricts us to the scope of the actual article. So the actual article is only to allow the Select Board to enter into an agreement with one particular vendor.
Gotcha.
We can't modify it based on that, so what Mr. Moderator is telling you is your ideas are good, they're just not valid to discuss during this particular article.
But I mean, like, is there anything to write it down for now? I'm not looking to discuss it. I'm just submitting an idea. That's all.
Yeah, and that's fine.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Any further discussion? This will take a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of Article 30? Those opposed? Article 30 passes by two-thirds with opposition. And we have two special guests here with us tonight in the rear of the auditorium, two state reps, Mr. Steve Willep and State Rep. Mark Sylvia. Thank you. Please stand and be recognized. Thank you for your participation here. Article 31. Joe, what are you holding, sir?
Hold, I've admitted. To offer.
I haven't even read the article yet.
No, I know. You know, I had time before you started reading it out.
Sit tight, Mr. Williams.
Wait until I read the article, if you want to hold something. See if the town will vote, under the provisions of the General Laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 41, Section 108, or any amendments thereto, to fix the salaries of all elected officials and to fund collective bargaining agreements for fiscal year 2026, and raise and appropriate any sum or sums therefore, and further raise and appropriate any sum or sums of money for the maintenance of the several departments of the town and for other necessary charges in accordance with the amount recommended by the Finance Committee as shown in the final column of the warranty, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. I will be taking a motion for the budget as a whole. I will then read each budget's total dollar figure by the part. Again, I won't read every line item. They're in the detailed handouts made available to you when when. You wish to discuss a particular budget, please raise your hand and say hold when I read that budget. We'll return to all held budgets once all proposed budgets have been read. You need not, again, to identify yourself to hold the budget, but be prepared to comment when we return to that budget. Here we go. Town meeting. Elections: $14,280. Moderator: $875,000. Selected: $252,400. Finance Committee total: $2,900. Account: $264,406. Assessors: $189,496. Treasurer Collector: $283,707. Town Council: $100,000. Technology: $243,715. Town Park: $162,486. Board of Registars: $25,826. Constitution Commission: $81,371. Soil Board: $15,800. Planning Board: $56,557. Board of Appeals: $6,655. Town Buildings: $232,183. General Government Total: $282,657. Police Department: $2,950,265. Fire and Fire EMS Department: $1,211,924. Building Department: $167,889. Ways and Measures: $2,219. Emergency Management: $17,900. Animal Control: $62,300. Forestry: $18,000. Public Safety Total: $4,415,742. Whole Colony Regional: $3,243,522. Acushnet School Department: $16,534,645. Let me take you back to Public Safety Total. I read $4,415,742. The actual number is $4,000,430,228. Public Works Highway: $1,013,856. Snow and Ice: $110,000. Street Lighting: $27,350. C-Mas: $1,359,62. Cemetery: $6,825. For Public Works Total: $2,517,093. Water Reserve Fund: $60,000. Public Works Water: $1,888,727. Water Debt Service: $207,000. Or a water total of $2,155,747. Public Works and Water Total: $4,672,840. Public Works and Water Total: four million, six hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. Water Palace: one hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars. Council on Aging: one hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. Veterans: one hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars. A Human Services Total of four hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars. Library: three hundred and five thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. Recreation: twenty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Parks Department: twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Historical Commission: seven thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. Miscellaneous Total: twelve thousand dollars. Culture Recreation Total of four hundred thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars. Regional Government Total: three thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. Debt Principal: three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Long-Term Debt Interest: eighty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. Short-Term Debt Interest: sixty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. For a debt service total: four hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. Pensions: two million, eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars. Insurance: two million, six hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. For a non-departmental total: four million, six hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars. General Fund Total: thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight... Thirty-six million, nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. Let's go back to the first held item. Planning Board.
Mark Francois Tripsway, Free Tripsway, also the chairman of the Planning Board. Mr. Moderator, Select Board, Finance Committee. The Planning Board does not support the budget as currently proposed. In February, the Planning Board voted to recommend a level-funded budget that retained a part-time clerical position. This recommendation was supported by the Town Administrator and presented to the Finance Committee, which offered no objection at the time. Since then, the budget was revised without consulting the Planning Board, resulting in a thirty-eight percent reduction and the elimination of the clerical position entirely. This significantly undermines the department's ability to function effectively. This past year, the Board has undertaken several major planning initiatives, including updating the 2008 Master Plan, 2001 Open Space and Recreation Plan, and the development of a Water Resource Management Plan. Implementing the goals outlined in these plans depends heavily on obtaining grant funding, as the town does not have the financial capacity to support these projects outright. The process of applying for and managing grants is time-intensive and adds to our already full workload. Fiscal 2025 alone, the Board applied for and managed over seven hundred and fifty thousand in potential grant funding. Each year, the town's budget challenges become more severe, largely because Acushnet lacks a diversified tax base, with approximately eighty-five percent of the tax levy derived from residential taxes. The burden on homeowners continues to increase. A strong and well-supported planning department is essential to remedy zoning issues that hinder commercial growth and to encourage responsible economic development that could reduce the tax burden to residents. Currently, the Planning Department consists of a town planner who is part-time, working both for the town of Acushnet and the town of Metapoisson. Our office clerk resigned in February, and the position has remained unfilled under the direction of the Town Administrator. Despite numerous attempts of reaching out to the Town Administrator to obtain a copy of the revised budget showing each proposed line item, they have failed to respond. The Planning Board respectfully requests that the Planning Board budget be restored to the original recommendation, keeping the budget level-funded and bringing its whole department budget to ninety thousand, six hundred and fifty. We believe this modest investment in the Planning Department is essential to maintaining progress towards the town's long-term planning goals and to support a sustainable financial future for Acushnet.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Mark, first of all, I'm a huge fan of you and what you do. I think Victoria does a great job. I know you and I spoke, but I understand you spoke to a number of members of the Board. And I think when you and I spoke, I said it's a very real possibility that we would look to consolidate in the Parting Ways Building the clerk who serves the Building Department and try to create a one-stop shop hub. And that's our goal. Mr. Hankley was negotiating that part of the ASME contract. The employee was on board with that. And also, our design is to provide administrative support in the form of a clerk who would serve the Planning Board and all the other boards to do minutes and facilitate that type of stuff to free up Victoria to do her job as the planner. So, um, that's the state of play. That's what we hope to do. Do we wanna do this? No, but we need to be consistent. What we're saying, we're asking people to make cuts and look at things creatively and strategically. That's, we made a decision that that was potentially the least impactful. I'm not saying the least important, but the least impactful to the overall general public. But it's our intuition and gut is that when somebody walks in the door to talk to the Planning Department, there will be somebody there full-time in the form of the clerk, who has also served, working in the Building Department. And, you know, in a perfect world, we would have a one-stop shop where somebody walks in and they can deal with Concom, border health, building, planning, all in one central hub to make it easier. Because I've heard too many times, somebody walks in, the right hand doesn't know what the left hand is doing, and so on and so forth. And that's something that we wanna do, so.
I would agree with that three, four years ago. In the last few years, there's been a lot of equal participation between departments. So the right hand knows what the left hand is doing, as have the last few years. If you recall, a couple of years ago, we tried doing the clerk's position with the Building Department. It didn't work.
You didn't have the right personnel, Mark.
It didn't work. And if all you're gonna do is tell the clerk at the Building Department to say, "Okay, do the minutes for the Planning Board", there's a lot more that's involved that Victoria, the Town Planner, needs to be on a one-on-one basis so she can do her job. Every time I watched a Finance Committee meeting with the School Department, every time I watched any meeting regarding the budget, it was always about, "We need more money, we need more money." And now you're gonna cut the department that finds the most money. They're the one department that finds, well, they find grants for themselves, but this department finds the most grants. We're going through the master plan, tell Mr. Gaspar, you know as well as I do. It takes a lot of work to, one, do the master plan and then to follow through with it. And we can't do that without a clerk. She's part-time. If she were full-time, I wouldn't be up here. I'd say, "Fine, she can handle it." She's there two days a week. She's gonna spend her time sending stupid emails about cutting the grass at some of your solar fields instead of looking for ways to make money for this town. You guys are not seeing the forest through the trees. Very bad.
Mr. Moderator? Mark, I appreciate what you do, Victoria as well. I have to say I disagree with not seeing the forest through the trees. What I'm seeing is a forest full of people that are here to support teachers and value education. And we're sitting here going through line item budgets with the productions of twenty-eight hundred dollars here, sixteen thousand here. And we spent an awful lot of time cutting everything we could at a town hall to do this. And I feel confident that the person that we have in place in building, who has worked in planning in different communities and has worked in building departments, will be able to fully encapsulate this position and do it. I can't in good conscience recommend we increase the budget thirty-four thousand dollars when we were just told that there's ten positions lost at the school with two possible complete losses at the school. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
When the Finance Committee had a discussion about this, it was brought to our attention that the clerks' hours were gonna be reduced to, I believe, four hours a week. And I think they were looking for, I believe the Planning Department was looking for closer to twenty or sixteen. So what we tried to do with the Finance Committee was just make a recommendation of meet us in the middle. And we made a recommendation of twelve hours per week. I don't know if that equates into thirty-four thousand dollars. But that was, that was what we discussed.
So, if I may speak in support of that actual issue right now, I just wanna point out that I fully support the gentleman in regards to planning board. And it's kind of another example. To hit the exact point, we have a hundred and ten thousand dollars budget for solar board. We had that budget last year, we have a budget for this year. I don't know how much that was used, probably not much, it was very small. It just seems there's a lot of other areas in this budget that the money could have been found for that gentleman in his department and one of the most important planning boards, or most important departments in the whole town to hit the exact point. Right? And then another very, very important would be teachers, right, in the school department. It just seems like we're finding money, right, for certain things that we all want or deem or some places we need, and then other spots that are also very important we're not. So I guess we want to speak very important, you know, I spoke on the set. I wish to make a motion tonight to actually say that, because we should, we should be finding thirty thousand dollars for the gentleman in the planning board, for all the reasons he said.
So, here's the deal. I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree with Mark, okay? But here's, I'm just gonna keep it real, what I see now. But five years down the road, ten years down the road, fifteen years down the road, the way town governments are going, in just the spring, I was driving up to a high school baseball game on the South Shore. Every town, Abington, Norwell, Chapter Proposition Two and a Half, override, 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 override. Fail, 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 fail. So we're looking at it, and I'm looking at it saying, "Okay, what do I have to do in the immediate? But also, what decisions can we make now that will set us up for five years down the road, ten years down the road?" I could kick the can, say, "All right, yeah, ignore them. Let's put the money in there, let's fund that position." I'm down with all that. But what we're trying to do is be creative and see if we can carry our government in a different way. Because probably what the next step is gonna be down the road is we're gonna be regionalizing all of town government, not just the Planning Department. You're gonna have a regional, you know, Town Administrator. You're gonna have a week, because we can't afford it. That's what we're looking at, that's what I'm looking at. Yes, it's a today decision, but what can we put in place to set the town up over the next five years, ten years? That is, it's a calculated risk. I may be wrong, but that's what I'm seeing based on just looking at municipal government. I've been doing this stuff for close to thirty years. And that, these are the trend lines, and we're trying to get ahead of it. See if we can be more creative with how we carry out the services. And I mean, I may be a hundred percent wrong, and I'll be the first one to admit it, but that's the calculated risk we're taking as we're looking to administer the town hall side of government.
Every department has a full-time clerk. So if the department's two full-time clerks, why can't we find part-time clerks for one department? And now I'm gonna have no clerk? Is there a way to make a motion tonight on the floor to fund this department?
Yes, you could make the motion, sir.
I make a motion to find thirty-some-odd thousand to fund this department.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Gaspar.
Can I make a comment?
Sure. We're in the discussion.
So, Mr. Francois, you're trying to say that the clerical position was cut for thirty-four thousand dollars? The math doesn't add up. There was twenty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars, that's four thousand, six hundred and seventy-five. So you'll get out about a fifteen, sixteen thousand dollar cut for the clerk's position. As Levin Wallen and Mr. Hankley had stated, we're not getting rid of a clerk, we're trying to do a better job with internal staff. There's been agreements being made with employees to carry staff, and I already had this conversation with you as well, to have the Building Department clerk that's always there to work for the Planning Board. People go upstairs right now, and you just said she's only there fifteen hours a week, two days a week. So when people go up there, they're gonna go back downstairs, they're not on the door, and they can talk to the Building Department. The Building Inspector's made a recommendation to us to merge everything into one. We didn't take that agreement. But what we're trying to do is just with a basic clerk's position. And I've had a conversation with you, and I promise to you that if the plan didn't work, we would change course immediately. And we can do that. So, it's not thirty-four thousand dollars, sir? There's been other things that the Town Administrator has cut out of the budget. And one of them is the benefit line item and things of that like, but it's not thirty-four thousand. That's what is showing as a cut from your budget. But your clerical staff was roughly sixteen thousand dollars. And I don't wanna get too political inside this room right now, but I also had a conversation with the previous two clerks and the planner and said, "I don't have enough hours in here for one clerk at nineteen and a half hours." So I asked you, "Why would I go back to a nineteen and a half hour clerk?"
You took that out of context when that was said. That's when they were trying to put two clerks into the Planning Department. We already had a clerk, and you were trying to put another clerk in, and we didn't need a second clerk.
How was it trying to put another clerk?
Some select members were trying to put a second clerk into that department, and we had said we didn't need a second clerk. That we had enough for her, not enough for that clerk. And now I have no clerk.
Mr. Moderator? I don't believe anybody on the Select Board ever wanted to put a second clerk.
What was Paul Sullivan's job?
Paul Sullivan was strictly, strictly involved as a researcher for the master plan. Paul Sullivan chose to submit a letter of interest to be on the Master Plan Committee and then was appointed to that. Had nothing to do with the Planning Board itself, was strictly for the master plan as a researcher to offset Victoria's workload. He was not going to be a clerk in that department.
Mr. Francois, if you wanna make a motion, you need to give us the amount.
Mark, you know I made the pledge to you. I've never lied to you. I've never lied to anybody inside this room. I'm not a liar. I stand by the people of this community. I stand by my employees as much as I can. It's the Board of Select's decision to make personnel decisions. Just allow us to make the position, the decision. And I told you before, if it backfires and it somehow doesn't start working, we will figure it out with you. I made that promise to you. I've never broken a promise to you or anybody else in this town. And I won't start now, I can promise you that, to everybody else inside this room.
Okay, we have a hundred and some eyewitnesses. I'll take you.
And they all just heard me loud and clear.
Thank you.
The next held item is the Acushnet School Department.
This morning, I made a motion. A motion to move to transfer our five thousand dollars from the General Stabilization Fund and add to the Acushnet School Department operating budget. The new annual operating budget, the Acushnet School Department will read sixteen million, six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars. The new education total will read nineteen million, nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Yes, to do, providing to us or repeat it slowly to the...
Yes, full, one more time. I move to transfer a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars from the General Stabilization Fund and add it to the Acushnet School Department operating budget. The new annual operating budget, the Acushnet School Department will read sixteen million, six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars. The new education total will read nineteen million, nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And I do have a motion for...
One hundred and how many, sir?
Fifty-seven. Nineteen million, nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred... Nineteen million, nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
All right, so to recap, move a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars from the General Stabilization Fund, and the school budget will be sixteen million, six hundred eighty-nine thousand, six hundred forty-five dollars, and the total would be nineteen million, nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, it's correct.
Second.
Moderator. Your motion is to take it from the stabilization fund, it's been seconded, it's their Moderator and Finance Committee recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, is there an opportunity for any more discussion?
Yes.
To the audience, the Finance Committee, we've had long discussions regarding stabilization funds, free cash, Proposition Two and a Half overrides. Our taxpayers in this entire town are taxed to the max. We are taxed in this state, we're overtaxed. If we start going down the road of taking money from the General Stabilization Fund, which is our emergency savings account, yeah, that may help things a little bit this year, but we're going to be back right back down this road again next year, it'll probably be worse, because every time we do that, we're creating a structural deficit that we have to make up the following year. Same thing happens with free cash. Want to use free cash? Okay, well, we don't have as much free cash to start with the next fiscal year. And now then, those free cash and stabilization, as defined by the Department of Revenue, are frowned upon to utilize for operating budgets. They're specifically meant for one-time expenditures, not the operating budget. So to go down that road now, it's just, it's going to continue down this path, and it's going to, ultimately, it's a, it's going to be a bigger burden on our taxpayers going forward next year. So we have to look at the big, the bigger picture here. Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Sir, thank you for offering that. I don't know if I'm for it or against it, because I don't know what the money will go to, so if I could ask the members of the school committee, each member, where this money will be spent, how it will be spent, who it will be spent on, I'm assuming you vetted this or not, maybe if this is a surprise to you, then I'd like to know the school committee's opinion. Mr. Chairman, Ron.
Ron Hood, Twenty-Eight Reservoir Road, School Committee. What I would suspect is that the superintendent will make a recommendation to bring back the two positions that we're losing, that the folks that don't have a job, and those will be the two positions that will be brought back.
Do you know that for a fact? The other school committee, if people ask us questions of how we're spending our money, why we're spending.
Right. So I, I'll speak for myself, the rest of the committee is here, I'll support bringing back the two positions that were let go, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I ask to clarify since I'm the person making the motion, I know we're talking to the school committee, we're kind of plying it onto them, but as a person making a motion, right, I can clarify what I intend the money to be used for. It is indeed a fact that money we intended to use for to bring back two teachers that have been laid off, who knows where it is. I tell you now, that is the reason I'm making that motion, right? That is the sum of the toll we've come up with, and that is a stopgap measure. Totally understand that next year there will be down this river, that is a stopgap measure, because we are now in a situation where we need to do this, to bring those teachers back, and that will give everybody here present an entire year to actually have the joint committee meetings, to have anything that possibly takes to rectify the budget and the financial operational budget, to fully follow those positions and keep the plumbing toward kids where it wants. That is very, that's where it goes, those positions.
Melissa Cordera, Vice Chair of the School Committee, I know you have a question, but they asked the school committee first. I think it's just absurd that anyone asks where they think this money, what we're going to do with this money. Of course, we're going to give it back to the teachers. Of course, a hundred and fifty percent, those teachers deserve a job. So for you to ask us, what are we going to do with the money? I, I just, what do you think we're going to do with it? Of course, we're going to give our teachers back their jobs.
Sarah Gomes, One-Nine-Two-Mattapoisier Road. I'd just like to make a comment with all of this rhetoric of how we're kicking the can down the road, and how we're always scraping and pillaging for money. As you can see here, and as everybody has heard, we do have millions of dollars in savings, which is pretty good for being destitute, as everybody has said. And I feel like it's up to our leaders to bring in additional revenue, since you know everything is getting bad each year. I really feel that the leaders should try to bring more revenue into our town, so we don't have it, have to keep reducing staff, reducing clerks, and just having our town fall apart. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Hank.
I recall anybody that wants to help increase revenue by opening up their front yard so I can open a popcorn stand. Honestly, every effort we make in general is to bring in revenue from the town. I can't open a Walgreens tomorrow across the street from here. Master Plan Committee is doing an excellent job right now, extending the business village district, or at least trying to, which will still require a town meeting vote to accept and approve, because that's a zoning change. There's a lot of wheels in motion to bring in revenue. We've been talking about this for three years, Miss Combs. I've been talking to you about it for three years, Miss Combs. Every possible idea for revenue, we've always tried to find, we've always tried to implement. Multiple boards and committees are involved to increase revenue, because the only way you can increase revenue is through new growth, taxation, or changing the dynamics of the tax brackets, which means increasing commercial business or industrial business. Most zoning-related issues involve a town meeting vote, if it changes zoning. So to say that we're not going out to try to find revenue is not true, it's not true whatsoever. I'll be happy to hear how we're not trying.
Mr. Moderator, if I may, Sarah, in reference to the rhetoric, you know, the, I remember vividly a few years ago attending a school committee meeting, and, you know, the Finance Committee for years has, had been begging for transparency and a detailed line on their budget. We got it now, but it took, it took years to get that. I mean, all we got were summaries. So we're always left scratching our head, what, where's the money being spent? We finally got it. And I remember, I remember after, after one meeting, you know, you came up, you came up to us, Sue and I, Sue was there too, you came up to us at the end of the meeting, and was like, Mike, why can't you just take our word for it? And it's like, Sarah, then why are we here doing this? I'm not just going to take somebody's word for what they're spending money on. We have to actually see it.
Mr. Moderator, I know there's not supposed to be discussion, but can I reply to that? Mr. Moderator, can I respond to that?
Yes, if I may, I would just like to interrupt for a second. Will the gentleman that gave me this motion please come up and sign it, please? Above your, above your printed name. Yes.
So for ten years, I was a school committee member, and brought to your, you know, information that you gave, for ten years, we've been trying to bring in revenue and cut costs from the school department, and started with regionalization, that was put a cobalt on ten years ago. We have other ideas that we've brought along throughout the years, and it's never come to fruition, whether it's lack of administration or just lack of support. So I understand that you're trying to bring things, more revenue into our town, however, I feel like the bureaucracy is just putting a hold on a lot of things. I've heard some ideas about jails, bringing, bringing bought into a cushionet, putting a jail into a cushionet, or marijuana farms. These are all ideas that were all bought at least a year or two away, and nothing's come about it. I haven't heard of any meetings or any subcommitments, subcommittee meetings, and I know Middleborough has bought, generated over a million dollars in tax revenue with their marijuana farm. Again, we're a farming town, I'm just throwing it out there as an idea. So I feel like the ideas are there, they're just not being supported, and that's just my personal opinion from being a political person in the town of Acushnet. Now, as for you, Mr. Boucher, who said, you know, about the school committee, you know, not being transparent, we would love to be even more transparent, however, our accounting system in the town of Acushnet is bugbear. We have no idea what kind of accounting system, the accounting system that's used in this town might as well be an abacus. Because, hold on, let me finish, please. And what I'm saying is, is that if we had a good accounting system, we would absolutely be able to be even more transparent, because it would be easier. So instead of our business managers, our former business manager, our new business manager, spending hours and hours and hours on Excel sheets, trying to figure out where each line item goes, if we just used units properly, then we would not have any of these issues about transparency, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, sorry, I just want, one point that I, I don't quite understand, though, is, Sarah, in order to even do your accounting, you needed to have gotten that, you needed to prepare the financials, right? That's what we were asking for, and that's, we did not receive that, Sarah, okay? So that, so.
Up until five years ago, you did receive it, you just didn't agree with what we were telling you, because we couldn't want to send you the thirty-seven thousand pages of each little line.
Yes, Sarah, and I asked for it, wait, wait, hold up, because, you know, what did I say? Sarah, send it to me, because I can handle that, right? So I didn't get it. So before we go down that road, before we go down that road, let's make sure full disclosure, full transparency.
I do understand why the Finance Committee would need to know how much pencils cost for our school, okay? We gave you just the same information as what our colony gave you, and it was absolutely fair.
Okay, folks.
Why we'll leave it at that.
No.
That's enough.
It is our responsibility to, to manage the finances for the town. That is our responsibility to balance it, Sarah.
I absolutely understand that, as long as.
Oh, no, that's enough. Silence yourself and take a seat.
Very good.
Okay, proceed.
Yes.
Peter Benoit, Twenty-Nine, Gabriel Farm Drive in Acushnet, Finance Committee. The fact of the matter is that the school budget challenges are not a surprise to the school committee or the superintendent. The Finance Committee told them that this was coming three years ago when we met with them in the Board of Selectmen in one of our joint meetings. In fact, it was in this meeting when we brought up the fact that the money that was coming from those COVID years that they had used to inflate their positional hirings was not guaranteed and was disappearing. And during that meeting, when we pressed the school committee and the superintendent for what their actions were going to be when that money disappeared, and it's on record during our meeting with Ms. Gomes, her answer was, well, we'll need to make cuts, right? Well, that money disappeared, they were warned for it, they were adding personnel when they shouldn't have been. Oh, by the way, since 2019, our school attendance has dropped eight percent. So we've got eight percent less students, and a budget increase that continues to jump up year after year after year. The personnel we're adding with the decreasing enrollment, care acquisitions whose annual expenses contractually grow faster than the support money received from the state and the town's tax revenue. I'd love for us to have a greater tax revenue stream in this town, but the truth is, we do not have much of a business district, and the tax revenue comes primarily from our property taxes. You want to increase the tax revenue, that means everybody here is going to have a tax increase, because realistically, there is no huge golden banana that you're going to find out in some tree that's going to bring money to this town. But at the time, the school fought for their budget increase, and they got the positions that they wanted to, in essence, they did kick the can down the road and chose to handle the potential problem later, when it's bigger. Well, unfortunately, it's later.
Mr. Benoit, please keep your comments brief, there are five or six other people behind it.
Mr. Moderator, I understand, but I also sat at that chair over there and listened to people wax profane for ten minutes on something that wasn't even pertinent to the article. What I'm talking about is pertinent to the article. The town simply can't find money from somewhere else, there's nowhere else. Multiple towns have the same position that we have right now. Financially, they're in trouble, and we've heard about the Proposition Two and Haves that have gone in front of the town and have been voted down. We've heard about tax increases that have come through that this town certainly doesn't want. Many of our town positions have taken reductions in hours, police and fire have been underfunded for years, delaying adding personnel and working short staff. Both departments have needs of equipment that have been held off longer than should have been in order to meet our safety needs. Our DPW is in dire need of resources. Whether or not you agree with a street sweeper, it's a piece of the DPW that we did have for years, unfortunately hasn't worked for years. So yes, we have one that doesn't work. Why hasn't somebody seen it? Like Mr. Shamboard said, I haven't seen it? Well, you haven't seen it because the damn thing doesn't work. Well, don't worry, we aren't going to see it anymore because that got voted down tonight. But truly, the town has turned over multiple stones and reached into multiple hacks the past few years to try and find every available resource, thanks to our administrator and the Board of Selectmen for their creative thinking to get us where we are. But they can only work on budgets that they oversee. The school's budget is under the control of the school committee and the superintendent, and as it stands, the overall school accounts for roughly sixty percent of the town's budget, sixty percent of the budget. Now, I know the numbers when you're looking at the budget seem a little awful, that's because our school teachers and staff, their health benefits and retirement are not allocated in the school's budgets that you see in front of you, they're actually in the town's overall budget.
Mr. Benoit.
Yeah?
Please give someone else opportunity to speak.
I will in a moment, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Benoit.
One of the things I want to address, Mr. Moderator, is the Stabilization Fund, which is pertinent one hundred percent to what we're talking about.
You're beginning to arouse my competitive spirit.
I understand. Let me finish making this last.
Take a seat, Mr. Benoit.
Michael Mann, Seventeen-Keene Road. Those who know me, I know I have a hard time keeping things short, but I will do my best. Lot of thought on all this, but I want to address Mr. Williams' motion. I love the spirit of it, great idea. Unfortunately, I, I feel taking from stabilization for the net and making that now an annual part of their budget, if I'm wrong, that's exactly what happened, correct? We do that, it's like going home on Halloween and giving your nine-year-old a candy bar. They're going to do it to you every year, they'll be waking up, sitting in the morning after the bounce off balls all night. They can't do it, they can't control it. We have school committee and Dr. Bailey running this, they've been having issues. To address the, the motion, it's a shell game, they want you to believe there's ten or two that are on, and it's going to be front-facing teachers, that's terrible, right? Let's pull the hot springs. Special education, how else are you going to get more hot springs pulled than that? I was in police office for almost twenty-four years, I'm going to tell you right now, I told every senior citizen that that scammed our money. When they play on your motions, tell you your grandchild's locked up in Canada, there's a scam. When they make you afraid, they make you fear for whether it's finances or your loved ones, it's a scam. And I'm not saying that the budget's a scam, that it's, I understand that, but the problem is, they don't want you to see overheads, three card monte what they're doing. They, they don't want you to see that we have a superintendent that's paid a very high salary, very high. We have a curriculum director paid a very nice six-figure salary, and it's probably all part of what a curriculum director gets. We have two schools. We have such a talented superintendent, like many other schools, they can handle that. We have an IT specialist, which we absolutely need, I'll never disagree with that, and I, I hate IT, so I, I say fund him all day long. However, there's, I believe, four assistants, probably in the sixty-some odd thousand dollar range, do we really need off of. We cut three of those, give rid of the curriculum director for a year, and save the front-line facing people, our children, we better off. The school runs smoother. If we can't have a superintendent do both those jobs, which we need, we need to make some decisions in the town. Because this is ridiculous, and, and again, I, I, I love the spirit of the motion, but it's not the right way to do it. We're going to add to the budget, and then next year, when they're much larger, and we still don't get those teachers and this sort of thing, or we have to lay off again because this, this finance crisis is going through, isn't going away in a year. It's going to take a few years to, to settle down. We need to not worry about just this year, but we need to worry about the future. I want the teachers there. Keep the teachers. Take them off the top. That's where we need to go.
Jay Madonna, fourteen Randall Street. My first question is this operational budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six. There is not one sheet about the school in here. Was that not put in on purpose? What's? I know you think the school meetings is fine, but-
I'm going to have the town council explain that to you.
Darren Klein, Chief of law through the moderator. I, I can't explain what, what, why materials are either in or not, but just so you know, the school department budget is a bottom-line budget. Whatever number passes tonight, whether it's the original amount or potentially the amendment, the school committee has the legal authority to spend it any way they, they choose. So it's different than other town departments. The only thing that can be voted is the actual bottom line, and then there's no, there's no, um, there's no requirement that the school committee spend it, how they may have calculated it and coming up with the budget. They have the legal authority to spend it in any way they please.
Okay, I understand.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
The information that was provided to you was provided by the town. We do not control and we do not publish the school budget.
Thank you. My next, uh, two more questions. I know you saw me at the school committee meeting talking about my son, who is autistic, and he is very well in the school with the help of the paraprofessionals and especially the teachers. I didn't get an answer to this last Monday. Maybe I'm not available tonight, but why in a sense did the bigger pay increases go through for this year's budget, for next year's budget? Why were those, you were warned for many years that this was coming. Why are those higher pay positions still getting those big salaries?
Nobody? And I guess my last question, since that one will never be answered, um, just-
I'll take a shot at it. I don't know how popular it's going to be, but I don't really care. Because I've heard a lot of concerned parents in this room right now, and some of them in yours, and the gentleman that's sitting over there now, I forgot his name, but Mr. Boucher told, Mr. told you, Mr. Boucher told you his story, right? He, he hit the nail on the head, man. Because if, if this is a problem of town or school, we all see the brick wall coming in front of us, right? And if you don't, you're just blind. It's been a conversation for a long time. I've told people in joint meetings, along with the FinCon and school committee and board of selectmen, we do our joint meetings, there's only so much money the town has to go around, right? Um, I don't know if we have, we don't have a revenue problem, we have a spending problem, okay? And what you said makes a lot of sense, because think about what you just said and it hit near and dear to my heart. That's why I wanted to try to comment on what you just said. If we all know that this freight train is going to hit the wall, why wasn't that dialogue happening in union negotiations and saying, you know what? Hey, so this is, this is the impact on the budget, and we're going to be looking for like a hundred and seventy-five thousand? If we give you a arbitrarily speaking now for everybody in the room, if we give the three percent raise that you want, we won't make it. But if we do a negotiation at two and a half, we can preserve everybody's job if everybody forfeits half a percent. Bang, problem solved. I, I, I don't know, and it, and it's not just about the school department when I speak like that. It's, it's everywhere, right? We, we just talk about the planning board's a clerk position, right? It, it's just the mentality. I can't explain it. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to do my best to explain it, but from person's perspective that grew up busting their ass to get to where they are and not really always about the almighty dollar, today's society just seems to be about me, 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 and no longer about us, us, us.
My last comment is there was something mentioned about the cuts. The school committee members, one of them stated that it would not affect the students at the school, at the school committee last week. And I just want you to know, it's going to affect the students. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator, if I may, Haley. Uh, Mr. Williams, this is just a safe lesson trouble here. You can't speak for a second until everybody else has had a chance to speak.
Mr. Haley, I was just about to mention that to him. Please let the people behind you speak.
To be clear, I never got to speak the first time.
You made, you made the motion.
Yes, you made the motion. It was seconded.
And I never got to even speak in favor of it or explain it.
Well, it's a-
Now that I'm addressing that, when I made the motion, I was able to actually speak in favor. I was never allowed.
Please, please go to the end of the-
You still have an opportunity to speak for him, Mr. Williams.
You will be able to speak.
Just smash that whole up.
Hi, my name is Courtney Rittenhouse, forty-two Birch Street. Um, I know that we should not be cutting the teachers in the schools. Um, we need to keep them in place. So, I know that he made a proposal of a popcorn stand in the front yump in the yard. I've lived in town ten years. I have no problem that that needs. I know it will keep the teachers in place. You absolutely can use my popcorn to make it pop, be a popcorn stand, because I actually love popcorn. So anytime, okay?
Hi, Jogi Savars, Portland Allen Drive. Um, town resident my whole life, so thank you all for your service. I do want to remind the town body that everyone here is an elected person. So you do have a choice if you don't like what you're seeing tonight. You have, you have the opportunity to vote when elections come out. And you also have the opportunity to get more involved. As far as the school committee budget, um, the school committee in fact does have open meetings where you can go in line for line, sit there and actually ask questions and look at every opportunity that, that you have, that you want, to ask questions. Master of the law, which I've heard a lot tonight, allows the school committee authority over their budget. So if you do not like how our school committee budget is, is working out, please at the town in the run for election or vote for those that are here or sit down during the public meeting portion. But that's most importantly. And I think for the selectmen, for those of all of you who are elected, this is an important meeting. I've been here a very long time. I've sat through a lot of these meetings at one time as chairperson. And I just want to say, I think the town is speaking very loudly. We need to find a way to either TRP, regionalize, or we need to find a way to, um, bring in other revenue funds. But cutting the planner, which I feel is, is an important department, and even just mindfully cutting it, this is a department that we should be heavily more invested in, in my opinion, if we, if we're looking at the popcorn stands, right? So I just look at it now and say, we're all in this together. You're all elected officials. We're all sitting here screaming as residents. I don't want to live for the rest of my life. I love my home. But the taxes, I don't have any more children in schools. I put four kids through this district. And I think Acushnet Public Schools is the reason why people are coming here. And then it's the reason why people are paying the taxes we're paying. So I understand how the budget works in town, and I get it. But we need to do better, and if regionalization is the answer, well, we're all in. And we tried that years ago when it got cut down. So let's see what this new administration can do. Because right about now, we are looking at something. And to everyone out there, vote, get involved, and join a committee, because it's not easy and it's a lot of bull crap. But guess what? It's your town money. It's your money. I go to work every day. I drive to Boston. I go to work every day, and it's my hard-earned money, my family's hard-earned money that's in this town. And we deserve what's right for everyone. But get involved and know who you're voting in and whether or not you're doing the job you want them to do and spending the money you want them to spend it and how.
Patrick McIntyre, two-twenty-eight Prospect Street, East in Massachusetts, uh, school business manager. I just want to come up and clarify a few things. Um, I like to operate on fact and transparency, so I think that's important that we all do. Um, the ESR budgets were set well before I started in the district. I can promise you there were no positions in those budget, in those grants outside of one. That one position was brought to the forefront when we proposed the next year's budget, when the ESR funds were going away, and that was a maintenance worker. We went from zero FTE maintenance workers in this district to one point zero FTE maintenance workers in this district. That budget was approximately fifty thousand dollars for that line item. That in itself, by keeping those services in-house and fixing electrical plumbing, building, maintenance, it pays for itself versus the hundred-something dollars an hour, the truck charges, the materials. We can, we can now do that in-house with one maintenance worker that was brought to the budget from ESR funds. So I just want to clarify on that. Um, health insurance, that's important, right? That is not carried in our operating budget, and that is typical of many town, uh, school districts outside of regional school districts. The, the regional school districts very much assess the, the, the partner communities for their health insurance. So it's in our budget, but they, we still pay for that. Our budget, standing alone as operating expenses as presented tonight, does not meet net school spending. We meet net school spending after the town allocates their costs to our operating expenses, which includes the health insurance, retirees, administrative costs, so on and so forth. If we do not meet net school spending, we get penalized by the government. Um, what else do I want to go? Home? Home is good. Yes, Mr. Williams. I want to make sure I got my facts straight. In April, with our assistant accountant, did, did, right, did we identify any surplus in the budget of money that was, wasn't spent or being spent to previous year bills, pay this year's bills? Was there any surplus at all? I just want to make sure I got that right. I believe the school district returned fifty thousand dollars back to the town last year from the operating budget. Is there surplus? There's no surplus? That, yeah, would be the surplus. We can't do anything else with funds that we don't spend it. It gets returned to the town. I want to make sure. So you did return money back? Yes, and I believe, you know, public record requests the emails. It's in there. Um, the next call that I just wanted to make is, you know, we've gone without a consistent town treasurer. I've been here for under two, under three years. We've had about four town treasurers. We've had no permanent town accountant, respectfully. We have a great assistant accountant that's recently joined board here. We have a town administrator that's more involved in the finance that I'm familiar with, and, and that's a good thing. But he's also retiring June thirtieth. I'm curious where and how we're going to rely on the financial numbers put forward moving forward in this town. Mr. Gaspar, I understand you're a financial guru, but there's going to be some concern with our full accounting staff and permanent staff and, you know, turn out, no consistency, that some of these numbers kind of get lost in the mix. Patrick, when do you start listing? Uh, August two thousand and twenty-two. Okay. Um, and then lastly, um, I just, we said we don't have revenue, it's an expense problem in the town, not a revenue problem. What has been the revenue increases over the last three years? And what have we closed up to free cash on an annual basis for the last three years? Those are just questions that maybe the town, you know, benefit from clarifying on.
The chair recognizes town administrator, Mr. Kelly.
Uh, before I get into the numbers that, uh, Mr. McIntyre requested, we'll go through some of the numbers. Basically, the town increases revenue between six hundred thousand and if they're lucky, eight hundred thousand a year. Next year, just back at the envelope, salary increases will be close to four hundred thousand. Health insurance increases a hundred and forty thousand. Water and sewer costs increases a hundred thousand. If you're now building in the hundred and fifty-five thousand for, from stabilization, you've wiped out any potential increase in revenue. That's the problem. It is a issue. As far as free cash, we have not filled a number of positions like Mr. McIntyre said. We've used a number of retirees because we can't fill positions. That's not just here, that's statewide. The financial positions are not being filled in a number of communities. And I understand that he's a little frustrated because he's dealt with a number of people, but they've been very good experts in their fields. We just have to use retirees who can only work so many months out of the year because they're restricted because they are retirees. But it's only because this town has a revenue problem. The revenue problem is because you're bound by two and a half. Two and a half goes up two to three percent a year. State aid goes up half a percent to one and a half percent a year. We've changed the way we do business in the last three years, and we've increased local receipts where they're up to four to five percent a year. It's a state that you need to look at as far as not keeping pace with inflation, what they give us. And as Mr. McIntyre notes, there are over two hundred school districts that receive only minimum state aid.
So just to clarify, it is a revenue problem?
It's a combination.
And related to the budget, um, in previous meetings, did we hear that this town will not be a sustainable town in three to five years if we don't correct those revenue problems?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Gaspar. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, all of us folks in the room, taxpayers, hard-working taxpayers in the room, we keep hearing it's a revenue problem. What are you going to do to bring in more revenue into this town? I'm going to take a second to break down what we call a town recap sheet. And I'm only going to give you a couple of examples of what's going on with revenue. When we adopted XI stacks some, god, decades ago, what did they tell us XI stacks was for? Roads and bridges. What we use right now, because now the government says, oh, have a revenue problem? We're going to change that law. You don't have to use it for roads and bridges after all. We'll put for any lawful purpose. We use it one point five million dollars in XI stacks to balance the budget. We use five hundred and fifty thousand dollars of EMS reserve receipt account money to balance this budget. I'm over two million dollars. I'm looking at the revenues. Mr. Kelly and I recognized when he came in, we were getting crap on our interest on all our stabilization funds and the money where we kept in the bank. And I won't bring up that person's name. Was a town official, just so you know. We're bringing in hundreds of thousands of dollars now in interest on the money that we hold for a reason. Before, we were doing thirty-five thousand dollars a year. We're doing ten X that number right now, and we're using an exorbitant amount of that now to balance this budget. Somewhere around two-twenty-five now. We went up seventy-five thousand dollars this year on that number as well. We, we increased a hundred thousand dollars on XI's this year alone. And we also used a hundred thousand dollars in the so-called meal stacks they adopted last year. We don't even know if we're getting a hundred thousand dollars in meal stacks. It was based on one quarter. We got twenty-five thousand dollars. They did a simple multiplication and said, well, there's four quarters. Use a hundred. We're at a very dangerous place in our revenue numbers that we're using to balance this budget. When you bring in a revenue number and some of these line items on the recap sheet, Mr. Kelly and I were doing the budget last year. I was leaving as a chairman, but I, I sat with Mr. Kelly and we had a million-dollar deficit to solve. We raised certain revenues for a certain reason, but there's a certain threshold. If you're collecting in a million dollars a year and a certain revenue line item, there's a, basically a rule of law, certain accountings would use and say, if your three-year average is a million dollars- is a million dollars, don't exceed 80% of that revenue line, because in any given year it drops below that, you're screwed, and we're coming to you for more money. So good management practices say, use the 80% threshold on a three-year run rate. I don't know why people keep saying, what are you doing to bring in more money? That's called new growth. Every time that we do do something great and we bring in more money, pow, that year is suspended. It's gone. It's not your year over year. Once you take that new revenue away, and I could build a Walmart tomorrow, you bring in $10 million. You know what a $10 million Walmart would do for the taxation of this town? Peanuts. Gives you $150,000 on a $10 million project. You know how many $10 million projects we have to do to solve this revenue problem? It's a joke. Don't be lied to. We just need to figure things out, be a little more fruitful. We spend our damn tax dollars and stop asking us all for our hot-earned dollars every time we turn around. It doesn't matter what you want, here's a sandwich, and eat it and like it. That's what it's all about. We have to be very careful. We have things that we need to fund. I get it. We've been busting out butt, Finance Committee Board, Selectment, Town Administrators, Finance Department. We're not magicians. And every time we come up with new revenue, it doesn't mean that, oh, hey, just give it to everybody, let them spend it. Once it's gone, it's gone. Get back with the same problem again. We really need to figure out a better way to do business. I think that's what the Board of Selectmen are trying to demonstrate with a little teeny planning board clerk for crying out loud, who's getting scrutinized over a $15,000 cut. I mean, you've got to start thinking outside of the box. And if it means cutting positions, so be it. Not speaking of the school teachers though, because we've said plenty of times on the Board of Selectmen, we don't want to cut those people that are facing the students. I've said it a million times. I'm not about that. Get somebody in the administrative and whack that job. Don't do it for school teachers.
Ashley Dexter, 244 Hamline Street. I understand that cutting forward-facing teachers is what their solution is, but are they prepared to come out of their administrative offices and actually help out the teachers? Because I, as a parent, have been to numerous things, and I have never seen Dr. Bailey there. My daughter just did a kindergarten showcase. Where was she? You want to see these cuts? That's great, but if you light her up and all of the students who can pick them up, I'm lying. But you know what the forward-facing teachers are? When was the last time you heard of a superintendent changing a child's life? You don't. But that kindergarten teacher who gets down on the floor with them and they're having a meltdown, that's the teacher that changes. I will tell you, I watched my daughter's kindergarten showcase, and that special education kindergarten specialist, she worked hard to make sure that every kid felt comfortable. I watched these teachers day in and day out, commit nothing but themselves to all of these students. They make them feel important, they know their meanings. Do you know how important that is for a kid who's having a meltdown? For, you know what? Them to show up with a pair of headphones, or stand beside them, or know that you need to stand near that kid. But you know what? All the administrators can't be bothered to know any of that. They sit in their offices. I had an issue this year with bullying. I got assured a call back. Oh, guess what? I didn't. But my daughter got pulled out of school, and then you know what? My daughter came home and said, oh, they aren't going to be able to use the playground anymore. And it wasn't just my daughter who came home and said that. I've had five or six other parents reach out for that. I've emailed Dr. Bailey several times, and you want to know what? Got no answers. But do you want to know what happened last Thursday? I just had to call the Department of Education, because I did feel like my daughter's 509 plan was being taken seriously. I launched that complaint at 8:05. At 8:55, I had an email. How come I have to call the Department of Ed for something to happen? But those are the people that are putting a bunch of work. That is absolutely insane. So I challenge all of these people who got a raise to get out of your office. Go help the kids, because at the end of the day, they're our future. They're the people who are going to be standing up here. My husband has lived in this town his whole entire life. And you want to know what? That's what we want to see, is these kids growing up to contribute to our town. So I challenge all of you who have sat with a nice cushy raise, they only run two schools, might I add, that are in one property. We have the idea of 10 schools that are everywhere. We have two schools that are one property.
You made your point. Give someone else a chance to speak.
I love when somebody makes a point, you cut them off. Have a great day.
Robert Rocha, that is a totally different type of question. What would an unexpected $155,000 do to our bond rating? Would it be negative?
What, Mr. Rocha, can you ask the question one more time?
Sure. So several of our articles tonight have been related to the town maintaining a solid bond rating, correct?
I guess. But I can tell you that one, I think his name's Mr. Williams, he's standing behind you. So when I asked the question, and I forgot that gentleman's name, I can see him right there, and they were making the motion to cut the, what's that? Mr. Orlando. I asked the question earlier on about what was the purpose, right? I was trying to figure out what was inside those two gentlemen's heads, and what was the objective? What were they trying to get to by cutting the street sweeper? Because I've already ruined out a little plan of my own instead of taking things from stabilization. If that's the objective, that's what I was asking for, I really think the street sweeper was a necessary purchase for the town to cushion it. So I have a way of funding now that Mr. Williams came back up and said he's looking for $165,000. If that's what the people in this room want, then I would entertain a different motion than taking it from stabilization. And I can tell you this right now, sir, I'm sorry, Mr. Rocha, but I'm getting tired, and sometimes I think a lot of people aggravated on my, because I think bad decisions were made. I can tell you right now, $165,000 ain't going to, $165,000 ain't doing jack diddly to your bond rating.
Kevin?
Nothing.
Mr. Gaspard, the reason I asked, and it was just for informational purposes only, is that this town has done a fantastic job over the years of having a good bond rating, good financial management, and I wanted to know that taking money from stabilization wouldn't hurt our bond rating and keep us in solid footing, as we have been forever. Because the FinCom and all of you have done a great job as long as I've lived in this town of living within our means. It's the only reason I asked. It was not meant to be an insult. It was a point of...
I would never think that of you, Mr. Rocha. I've known you for a long, long time, my friend. You're a phenomenal man, but I would, before, once these people are done speaking, if that's the, I don't know how to do this, Mr. Moderator, but to ask what the appetite is, if that's what they're going after, it would not be my recommendation. Technically, 100K is not going into stabilization the way I got it going on right now, but everybody blew by those articles. If I would have known that when we discussed the street sweeper, I could have made some different recommendations on how we got to that goal from Mr. Williams, Mr. Orlando.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Dr. Buche.
I'm going to make this real quick. I just want to use a numbers example of what we spend on education here in this town. I'm going to go back to 2016, and I got this from Desi, the Department of Secondary Education. So net school spending is the minimum amount of money that the state says we should be spending on our kids' education here. So in 2016, we were 534,000 over net school spending. 2017, 687,000 over net school spending. 2018, 1 million, 1.1 million over net school spending. 2019, 1.5 million over net school spending. 2020, 1.6 million over net school spending. 2022, 1.5 million over net school spending. So the point I'm trying to make is, we spend money on our school system here. We're not holding anybody to the minimum standard. We never have. I've been on this committee for 19 years, and not once have I ever seen us pull the school department to a net school spending standard. Never. We've always spent a good amount of money on the school department, plain and simple.
Mr. Williams, if I could make a suggestion, you could withdraw your motion to take from the stabilization fund. Now, let me finish.
I apologize.
And make a motion to take it from free cash. We just freed up $275,000. The quantum of vote to remove from the stabilization fund is two-thirds. If you take it from free cash, it's a simple majority. It's your call.
Well, to address that, I'd be fine about the free cash, and I'm okay with that on stabilization, but since it's a sudden swift change, I would like to hear at some point in time from the FinCom or somebody else if that's a better idea. Because I know you mentioned this now, that if you had known ahead of time and maybe changed amendment, here's a chance for the leaders in the room who would believe it, right? If somebody up there thinks a better way to solve the problem, then solve, right? Because here's the issue with Andy. Say this, right? The gentleman before me earlier said about shelving, right? He mentioned shelving, and he said, when they tell you to be afraid of something about a bunch of other kids, a whole lot of ads, it's a shelving. Tonight, I just heard it's a dangerous place where it's taxes. I've heard, you're screwed, we're coming for you, right? I just witnessed vice-chairman of the FinCom get into a verbal argument with a previous spokesman. I was there on Monday when the two chairs, out of attention in the room, all started a fistfight. It is glaringly apparent this is not about 150K. Stop and bolster us about there's no revenue, we're broke. We're not broke. We have $4 million savings. Compared to that, I'm broke, right? That's not broke. We have 1.2 million-ish in free cash without even touching the street sweeper, right? So before we say, well, now we have 200K, let's free, do that, you had over a million in the first place. You already had over a million that you could have allocated to that. So we sat down and made the first decision and said, yeah, I know what? I have a million plus we have extra, we're going to do the street sweeper and not the children. That only happened. Kid, that's not enough, that hasn't happened. This is, we saw it, the Spider-Man meme, right? This is the, this is school committee, five, we talked about five years ago, this community happened. How is that relevant to my kids' temper? How is it relevant to his kids who get a cut, or a cut teacher? How is it relevant to them? It's not. He just tried to add, this is a big fat I told you so. But all this is between all the men and women, and I apologize if we're not proud of it, but this is glaringly apparent, a big I told you so. There's money there. It doesn't affect the bond rating. So I have to answer that question. I actually have the answer for you. I give it up. You still retain, right? Over 10% stabilization, 10.3, 10.4. It doesn't touch the bond rating. That's a fact. It doesn't. It's not double or triple, it's just rough numbers. It's a butt and wants to put toes. It's not about the money. This is about men and women at this table, dug in, said enough's enough, we've been telling you for three years, you spent too much money. Cool, at my kids' expense, okay? What I challenge the guys over here today is spend 150K, and then everybody here, put all your heads together collectively and fix the problem. That's what we voted on for. You're elected to solve the problem, not for me to come up with your motion. That's atrocious. That's silly. There's nobody else here figuring out the problem. That's the same. So again...
Mr. Moderator?
We see what this is.
Mr. Hankley?
Yes. Mr. Williams, there's a drastic difference between us saying we're broke, which we've never said from a capital perspective, and operating budget. Operating and capital budget is two separate things. Industry standard in the entire country is to operate between 3% and 5% of your annual budget in free cash. We usually run between 2% and 3%. So we're below on actual how much free cash we got. Like Mr. Gaspard said earlier, we have to keep revenue streams budgeted on a three-year average of around 80%, especially things like excise tax, because it could happen, I'm hoping it doesn't, half this room, their cars could die tomorrow, they get rid of them, they don't pay excise tax on it anymore. There goes revenue. It's not about us saying we're broke completely. We have money. The reason why stabilizations are there are to fix the capital issues, and that's the purpose that we were talking about. When we say we don't have money for operating budget, it's because we have to have a guaranteed stream of revenue every year to make sure that our operational budget can be maintained. That's all we've ever said. You can go back for at least the three years that I've been involved with these two gentlemen here. All we've ever said is, this is our operating budget, this is our capital budget. And I've often to explain operation versus capital to a lot of people, and I have no problem continuing to do that. You can't factor in, and we're not disagreeing 100%. Fund the teachers. I'm okay with spending $155,000. I'm completely okay with that. What I'm saying is, it's not as simple as you telling us to make a decision right now and solve the problem, because if we solve it tonight, it doesn't solve it next year. We have to rely on everybody else involved to make sure.
To fix it if you want.
If we have a 16% increase in health insurance, a 22% increase in our trash cost, we're already stuck behind the eight ball next year, and then we're still going to have to make cuts. And you can have 155 on top of that. It's not black and white. It's 100% of black and white.
I would say to prevent that, right? Everybody here, as I just said, I fully acknowledge you that we're paying a Comcast bill this month. I saved the count, and we shouldn't be doing that. I get it. I get that. Whatever happened three years, four, five years ago, there is a glaringly apparent, blatantly disconnect in our current town government. It's broken. It is broken when chairman and chairwomen are at meetings yelling at each other, right? And Mr. Moderator, I apologize, I feel bad. He's banging a gavel because we have the FinCom and yelling and arguing with previous school boards. You want to convince anybody here there's not issues in town, and it's all just, wow, the school board, the school board, the school board? Come on. But we're not, we see it. So what I'm saying is, this is immediate fix, it's a stopgap fix for one year old, so we can then fix all the drama and all the issues, either by running for office, going to meetings, so on and so forth. In the future, we'll find 100K.
Mr. Williams? Please give someone a chance to speak.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to comment on my motion to change it from free cash as a post-stabilization fund. If I hate to write on that motion, I'll do so, change the source of funding.
Your motion is to take 155,000 from free cash instead of stabilization?
Absolutely.
Is there a second?
Second.
I hate to say this, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
If the town meeting would agree, it would take some reconsideration on three different articles that I wrote down to get to the 165 that they're looking for to replace those two positions. Instead of taking it from the street sweeper, the 275, we could, because you didn't do anything with that 275 yet, so we'll leave money on the table, just roll back into free cash. There's another way of doing this from other free cash articles and get to the same goal. All I'm asking for is the people want to hear what I have to say, and if not, don't buy a street sweeper, use 165. Whatever's left from the 275, it'll roll into free cash for next year. That's fine. I'm trying to kill two birds with one stone. I'm trying to do the public a favor by getting everybody's street sweeper, the new friggin' street sweeper, and I'm trying to replenish the 165,000. 155, that was the request, out of free cash to replace those two teachers that were cut, as long as the school business administration, school committee understands the objective of you folks in this audience tonight want the two teachers back in the classrooms.
Mr. Gaspard, we can't reconsider other articles until this motion has been passed.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Essentially, just for clarification, either the modified amended motion from Mr. Williams either has to be voted on or withdrawn before Mr. Gaspard can present his case.
Darren Klein through the moderator. The article has to be disposed of before there can be a motion to reconsider of another article.
Can you explain that?
We can't reconsider an article while there's a discussion in progress on the motion. It has to be completed. Mr. Moderator, in other words, we have to pass, keep going and pass this budget.
Mr. Moderator, in other words, we have to pass, keep going and pass this budget, and then reconsider the other articles.
Yeah, so I tell you this, make a place be for everybody here. I am not early to this motion, right? Okay, unless I've guaranteed other reasons for funding that we can at least vote on, okay? So if we can do the 155 on a free cash, give it a vote, maybe the rest is passed, maybe they don't, and if there's follow-on other things that you want to add to balance that and go back in, I'm all about it, you're all day long, I'm here with you. I'm not gonna take this away until host.
Mr. Moderator, if I, if I get what town council's trying to explain and what you're trying to explain, good. The gentleman, Mr. Williams, made a motion on the floor to increase the town budget by 100 and...
55.
55,000? By 155,000 dollars. We just keep moving through the omnibus budget, get it approved, and then we'll go back to a funding source to make that 155,000 dollars?
Correct. What we could do is go through this budget, Article 31, as written, and then reconsider the earlier article.
Sure, we should have passed this motion or whatnot.
So Darren Klein through the moderator. So any motions to reconsider a previous article cannot be done until this article is disposed of.
Correct. Yeah, again, so take it for a vote, either we vote up, we vote down, and then it's disposed, it's done. The town gets a chance to vote on it, either vote up or they vote down, and then this is done, it's over. And then if you'd like to go back, and then either amend or add or take away to shore up that funding, I'm all about it, I'll be here all night, let's fix.
Mr. Moderator, the gentleman, the town meeting's already held, or for lack of better terms, put down the street sweeper. The only thing that I'm trying to do is get the townspeople a street sweeper, because it is unsafe conditions out on the road, so we should get our streets swept, right? It's something that a lot of people call our office on. So if my suggestion at town meeting of Mr. Williams to reconsider a couple of our articles, to come up with free cash a different way, doesn't work, then he's got his 155 out of the street sweeper.
Mr. Gasper, let's take it one step at a time. We need to vote on this budget, and then we can, we cannot reconsider anything until this article has been voted on.
Ray St. Pierre, 22th Street, I'd like to call for that vote.
We need... Yes, Mr. Moderator.
I have a great amount of respect for Mr. Gasper. Trying to be creative, but here's the deal. Mr. Williams got up here, he obviously knows the system, he put forward a plan, this is what he says it is. Friday night, now we're doing all this monkeying around. Assuming Mr. Williams figured this out, thought it out, had a plan, whatever the result is, is the result, you know? Doing all this jumping around with something outside of the process. We spent four months, six months with the process, and then one night, we end the process. If you believe in it, roll with it, don't monkey around with it. Stick it to a vote.
I'd like to call a vote.
You still got, we, we're waiting to discuss. Yeah, well, you jumped in line. It's at the moderator's discretion. You know, I, I just want to bring up one quick point, which I didn't get a chance to earlier. We're trying to talk about raising our free cash and our stabilization. We've already explained from the finance committee why that is not a financial viable situation. My question is, why does the town have to raise its stabilization funds when the school department on Article 29 just added 193,000 to their own stabilization fund? Why don't they fund their teachers out of their own stabilization fund? Now granted, it's a special... It's the special ed stabilization fund, which I understand that there's a need for it, but if I'm remembering correctly, there's over 330,000 dollars now in that fund with the addition that was voted on this year. And also, please correct me if I'm wrong, but last year, didn't you use some of that special ed stabilization fund to balance your operating budget? I believe that's the case. So if you did it last year, why can't you do it again this year to fund the two positions that you say the town was taking away from you? I don't know if we pay attention anymore, Patrick McIntyre, 22nd Street. Mr. Moderator?
Hey, I'm voting the motion to adjourn for the fourth Monday of July. If we don't give control of this meeting and get a fucking vote down, sorry for the prepared me. I can't have it up in the bakery with everybody, all right?
Mr. McIntyre, let Mr. Williams come up. Mr. Moderator, we will need him to make a motion. Just confirm it. Just confirm, Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams, just confirm it.
Mr. Chairman, why aren't you holding this process, sending a citizen to the residence to do your work? Just do the work yourself. Senator, residence, do your work, do your work, make the motion yourself.
We have, we have someone that was called for question. That means we will vote on the budget.
The gentleman who made the motion is a resident of this town and has every right to come up here and make a motion, that he did. So why are you accusing, this is, this is what these guys are talking about in terms of the bickering back and talking about the problem, and they're accusing us of...
We had a motion to call the question. There is no, no more conversation. This will take a two-thirds vote, and then we will vote on the budget.
Mr. Moderator, we doing this out of stabilization, just let it ride the way the original motion was if they want?
No, it's been on free cash. All votes, you're voting on Article 31, the budget. We're voting on calling the question first. If two-thirds of you want to call the question, that means then we will vote on the budget. The amendment. We are going to vote, there's no more conversation, you vote on call of the question. All those in favor of calling the question, please raise your hand. It's the motion to end debate, it's called call of question. We will end debate. Everyone in favor of ending debate? Those opposed? The motion to end debate passes, we will now vote on Article 31, the budget. We are now voting on the amendment that Mr. Williams made. Transfer 155,000 dollars from free cash. And add it to the school budget. School budget would be 16,689,645 dollars. And the total school budget would be 19,933,167 dollars. And the new total for Article 31 would be 37,143,705 dollars. All votes in favor? Go on your majority vote. Those opposed? Article 31 passes without opposition. The amendment passes without opposition. Now we're voting on Article 31. We're waiting for the accountant to move up the speakers.
The main motion is, the town vote pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108, or any amendments thereto, to fix the salaries of all elected officials, all officers, and all employees appointed or employed to fund collective bargaining agreements, and for the maintenance of the several departments, and for other necessary charges, in accordance with the amounts recommended by the Finance Committee as printed in the warrant, and to fund said appropriations, transfer from available funds, and raise and appropriate as follows: taxation, state aid, and local receipts, 36,377,215; EMS reserved receipts, 550,000; water surplus fund, 60,000; debt premium, 1,550; free cash, 155,000, for a total of 37,143,765.
Is there a second?
Second. So move.
Motion has to be made.
Do you want me to read that again, Jamie?
Oh, just saying, the motion that they made.
Motion to approve Article, uh, motion?
As stated.
As stated by the town administrator.
Article 31. Is there a second? Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends this article.
We're gonna put it to a vote. All votes in favor of Article 31 as just stated, please raise your hand. Take a majority vote. Those opposed? Article 31 passes unanimously.
With opposition, Mr. Moderator?
I missed it. Thank you. Article 32, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money to operate the sewer enterprise fund as shown below. Reserve fund, 60,000 dollars. Salaries, 91,878 dollars. Operations and maintenance, 664,756 dollars. Debt service, 329,176 dollars. Indirect costs, 17,409 dollars, for a total of 1,163,219 dollars. To be raised as follows: sewer revenues and retained earnings. Sewer revenues, 774,643 dollars. Retained earnings, 388,576 dollars, for a total of 1,163,219 dollars. Or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve the sewer enterprise budget and to appropriate the sum of 1,163,219 dollars for the sewer enterprise fund operation as follows: 774,43 dollars be raised from estimated sewer deposit receipts. 60,000 to be transferred from sewer retained earnings. 329,176 dollars to be transferred from sewer benefit fund. Said sums to be allocated between salaries, expenses, debt service, and reserve of the sewer department for the fiscal period July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026, inclusive as printed in the warrant.
Second. Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends this article.
Any discussion? There are none, put it to a vote. All votes in favor of Article 32. Those opposed? Article 32 passes unanimously. Article 33, see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money to operate the golf club enterprise fund as shown. Reserve fund, 100,000 dollars. Salaries, 785,510 dollars. Operation and maintenance, 845,752 dollars. Debt service, 307,375 dollars. Indirect costs, 93,975 dollars, for a total of 2,132,612 dollars. Sum to be raised from golf center revenue, 2,032,612 dollars, and retained earnings, 100,000 dollars, for a total of 2,132,612 dollars. Or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve the golf enterprise budget as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee voting unanimously to approve this article.
Any discussion? Let's put it to a vote. All votes in favor? Those opposed? Passes without opposition. Article 33. Article 34, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the golf course retained earnings a sum amount to exceed 125,000 dollars for the purpose of various capital repairs and replacements, including bunker renovation work and/or other necessary and proper expenditure approved by the board of selection, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote, Article 34 is printed in the warrant.
Have a second.
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends this article.
Any discussion? There are none, put it to a vote. All votes in favor? Those opposed? Article 34 passes without opposition. Article 35, see if the town will vote or amend the town of Acushman zoning map in accordance with a list of changes as on file at the town clerk's office at the Piningways Building, 130 Main Street of Acushman, and attach here to as an appendix. And/or take any action relative thereto. This will be a two-thirds majority required. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote, Article 36, to amend the town of Acushman general bylaws.
Sorry about that?
Mr. Moderator, I move the article vote, Article 35, to amend town of Acushman zoning map in accordance with a list of changes as on file at the town clerk's office as printed in the warrant.
Any discussion?
Was this something that was passed out to us when we first came in, by any chance? Or is this only available on the town hall?
Plenary board chair is there.
Okay, great, thank you.
Does the planning board have any recommendations of this article?
The planning board approves this article unanimously.
I don't think anyone can hear you, moderator.
The planning board approves this article unanimously.
Any discussion?
Dr. Tom, it's twenty-five South Main Street of Acushman, obviously. Could we elaborate a little bit on this change so that the public is aware? I don't think we've all been well informed of this possible change.
This map reflects changes approved by previous town meetings that are not currently reflected on the zoning map. Two changes include adding a floodplain overlay district and rezoning two parcels on Bradford Street. The floodplain overlay district was approved on Article sixteen of the town meeting warrant on May tenth, twenty-twenty-one. The rezoning map, fifteen lots four eighty-two and five thirty-four, from the residential District A district to the residential village district, was approved in Article thirteen of the town meeting warrant, October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two. There are no other zoning changes. Basically, we have a zoning map that just needs to be updated to the votes that have already been approved through the town. That's all this is.
Mr. Moderator?
Thank you.
Yes, Mr.—thank you. Just to reiterate, I believe this was actually discussed at multiple planning board video—uh, planning board meetings, and it's a good opportunity to remind everybody that they can sign up for every single board and committee. Any kind of meeting minutes and meetings and agendas on our website, uh, to—albeit be stuff like this from happening.
Any further discussion? If not, put it to a vote. All votes in favor of Article thirty-five. Again, it'll take a two-thirds majority. Those opposed? Article thirty-five passes unanimously. Article thirty-six, see if the town will vote to amend the town of Acushman general bylaws, Articles eight zoning, to remove all references to its several accessory apartments, the text of which is on file in the office of the Town Clerk and the Planning Board at the Pottings Ways, one-thirty Main Street, Acushman pass, and attaches appendix A, or take any action relative thereto. Again, this will take a two-thirds majority to pass. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote, Article thirty-six, to amend the town of Acushman general bylaws, Article eight zoning, to remove all references to accessory apartments as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? Second. Planning board, any comments?
Planning board approves this unanimously.
Any discussion? Again, this will take a two-thirds vote to pass. All votes in favor? Those opposed? Article thirty-six passes unanimously.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Gasker.
Can we ask town meeting—I talked about reconsidering some articles. We're on the last article, everybody's gonna run out the door. It—can we ask town meeting if this—if not, we'll just kill the street sweeper, but is there any appetite to reconsider two articles? Well, we have to go back to twenty-two, too, to put that street sweeper back on. So, is there an appetite to buy a street sweeper if there's another way to do this? It—it—it's so, Mr. Tom.
What do you—
Mr. Moderator, if I could make a motion to reconsider either Articles—Article sixteen, fifteen, and seventeen, and reconsider Article twenty-two, the street sweeper.
You want to reconsider four articles?
Nope, I'm gonna have a conversation about those. So, the reconsideration to fund one-hundred-and-fifty-five for the school department offset will either be Article sixteen, OPAB Article fifteen, or Article seventeen, which is a stabilization article.
Well, first, we should take a vote of reconsideration. Yeah, which article, Mr. Gasker?
Make a motion to reconsider Article fifteen and seventeen. Take it easy.
Second.
What is your motion? To reconsider an Article fifteen first? We need a vote on a motion to reconsider. It'll only be a majority vote. All votes in favor?
I would reconsider sixteen.
Those opposed? Motion to reconsider passes without opposition. What is your motion?
Mr. Moderator, I make an article to reconsider Articles sixteen and seventeen after further dialogue with town administrator.
You need to withdraw the motion on Article fifteen first.
I withdraw the motion to reconsider Article fifteen. I apologize. Now, Mr.—Mr. Moderator, I make a motion on Article sixteen, instead of transferring from free cash a sum of one-hundred-thousand dollars to OPAB wire trust account, I'll—I'll amend that motion to be fifty-thousand dollars to the OPAB trust account, because we're already sitting on one point—somewhere around one-point-five million dollars.
First, we need to vote on the motion to reconsider Articles sixteen and seventeen. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes without opposition. Now, Mr. Gasker is making a motion to amend Article sixteen to reduce the monies to the OPAB trust account from one-hundred thousand to fifty thousand. Is there a second?
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends this.
Discussion.
Sarah Gomes, one-nine-two Madapwaysit Road, just a quick question. That fifty thousand dollars, if it's not put into that account, how much money are we losing in interest? Is it a lot of money, or not that much, or I'm not sure?
It's—the reason why I did it this way, and I talked to the town administrator, the healthcare stabilization account needs to be replenished there. This account is—if we did the hundred thousand, so it's—now it's gonna be one-point-six-twenty instead of one-point-six-two.
Right, but how much does that make on the interest? Fifty thousand over ten years, or something? Are we losing a hundred—like, what's the interest rate on—
Because next year, we'll just make up the difference of what we did this year for the OPAB trust liability out of free cash.
Or find money somewhere else and just—
It'll be free cash again, right? We've always done this, we've been in the habit of doing this because of the OPAB liability. So, every year, we're making contribution to the OPAB.
But we're still—
OPAB liability trust fund, and we'll just do that, and then maybe next year it's not a hundred, maybe it's a hundred and fifty. We'll see what next year looks like, right?
But just to be clear, we are missing on—on some interest of that fifty thousand, whatever it is, is that correct?
Yeah, so fifty thousand dollars is—
I know what it is, I'm asking.
It's—it's—it's nothing compared to what we're earning, so that's the whole point of getting these certain stabilization accounts up there, right? We're collecting pretty good money, I think we're doing almost a hundred, two-hundred-and-something K in the interest in our regular stabilization account, right? So, you get to a certain level, you would hope that your money's working for you, that's the object of life, right? Is to let your money work for you and compound at its own interest rate. So, once we get to a certain level, hopefully, we don't have to fund this stuff anymore, it'll just be funded itself, earning interest.
Wishful thinking, but are you—do you know what the interest rate is?
Like, know what the interest rate is?
In that—in that vehicle that we're using for OPAB? You can tell me later.
I—I—I don't know, but I—based on some of the research that I have inside, I'm hoping I'm not gonna bore everybody, because it's really late. We're doing somewhere around three and a half, four percent.
Thank you.
All right, folks, the issue before us now is the vote on the amendment on Article sixteen, reduce the funding from one-hundred thousand dollars to fifty thousand. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion to amend passes. We will now vote on Article sixteen itself as amended. All those in favor to reduce that from one-hundred thousand to fifty thousand? Those opposed? Article sixteen passes as amended. Mr. Gasker, what's your proposal on Article seventeen?
The orig—the original talk was to take it out of stabilization, so we've earned this past year with what we have in stabilization, somewhere around two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars in interest. Ladies and gentlemen, I believe we need to put one-hundred thousand dollars, so my motion is to table Article seventeen.
Motion to table—well, I'll just say table. To table, Mr. Gasker, we'll take a two-thirds vote, if you postpone indefinitely until the government.
I make a motion to postpone indefinitely.
All those in favor to postpone indefinitely Article seventeen. Those opposed? The motion postponed indefinitely passes without opposition. Now, if you move and you look back at Article thirty-seven.
Article twenty-two, this is the—moderator?
I think—no, Article twenty-two is a street sweeper. All right.
That was all purpose, that was all we just did.
Okay, what's your, uh, proposed amendment on Article twenty-two?
So, it's to reconsider the—I make a motion to reconsider the street sweeper that was taken out of Article twenty-two by Mr. Williams.
Second.
Or Mr. Owen.
Article two-hundred-and-seventy-five, that.
So, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Gasker.
I know the town administrator started to talk to you right now, but I'm not gonna nickel and dime with town meeting right now, they all wanna go home, including me. So, I will make a motion for the street sweeper to two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, not to exceed two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, and we got our one-fifty-five.
Mr. Gasker, we need to vote on the motion to reconsider first.
Okay.
It's parliamentary law, we're all learning as we go. All votes in favor of reconsidering the vote on the street sweeper? Those opposed? The motion to reconsider passes without opposition. Now, Mr. Gasker, what's your motion?
I make a motion to amend not to exceed two-hundred-and-seventy-five to not to exceed two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars.
Two-hundred-and-seven.
For the street sweeper, DBW, right?
Second.
We are now gonna vote on the motion to amend the street sweeper funding from two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand to two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. All those?
Mr.—Mr. Williams wants to say something.
Discussion.
I just have a question about the extra hundred and twenty thousand dollars, for clarity, you've just pulled out a hundred K from—that was gonna be going to stabilization, there was fifty K that was pulled, that's total one-hundred and twenty thousand.
From the OPAB article?
Yeah, so it was—it was a hundred.
That's a hundred and fifty. You added a hundred and fifty-five to school department budget, I'm only going to two-seventy on this, that saved you five grand on this one, you have one-fifty-five.
Okay, can I finish? Please, just—there were—those previous two articles, let's go to amendment. One was to wipe out fifty K. You gained fifty K on the OPAB account. Just now, we wiped out the other article indefinitely, you gained a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars. Awesome. So, you have one-fifty, okay, out of that pocket. So, where is the other hundred and twenty for spickability? You went from one-fifty to two-seventy-five.
No, no, I just got you—I just got you one-fifty of your one-fifty-five you added to the school department, that was all purpose of all this.
You know, I'm just—I'm just asking, if—if this article, point clarity here, that was denied the street sweeper, which I don't care why, it's irrelevant, right? But point being, if you're taking your hundred and fifty from those two previous articles, and that's going to the street sweeper, where is the other hundred and twenty?
No, no. You already voted for that to go to the school department. That's a moderator, there's a hundred and twenty thousand left in free cash that you didn't use when you took the hundred and fifty-five, because—
So, that's—it's coming from the free cash, and it's not used before.
So, I'm still funding, that was all purpose, Mr. Williams, I'm still trying to fund the street sweeper and get to everybody's objective of replacing those two positions. So, all I'm doing now, instead of tampering with another article, I'm just saying we're only gonna spend two-seventy on the street sweeper, not two-seventy-five, and we've not our objective.
Well, appreciate it. That—that was a thank—
Okay.
Okay, so, first, we have to vote on the amendment to reduce the funding for the street sweeper from two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand to two-hundred-and-seventy thousand. All those in favor? Those opposed? The amendment passes unanimously. Now, we need to vote on Article twenty-two as amended, with the reduction in the funding for the street sweeper from two-seventy-five thousand to two-hundred-and-seventy thousand. All those in favor? Those opposed? Article twenty-two passes without opposition as amended.
Thank you.
Article thirty-seven, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Acushman general bylaws, Article eight, section eight, large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations, the text of which is on file in the office of the Town Clerk and the Planning Board at the Pottings Ways, one-thirty Main Street of Acushman, and/or take any action relative thereto. This will take a two-thirds majority to pass. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote, Article thirty-seven, to amend Article eight, zoning section eight, large-scale ground-mounted solar voltaic installations as printed in the warrant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Planning board recommendation?
Planning board recommends this unanimously.
Any discussion? There were none, we'll put it to a vote. Oh, it's discussion, I'm sorry.
Mr. Moderator, Rizendis, thirty South Main Street, for the record, uh, solar's taken over our town, and, uh, I think the planning board did a great job with clarifying a lot of things in this, but I think there's something that can be added, that can put a little more, um, deterrence on, uh, this bylaw. So, I move to amend Article thirty-seven, section one-point-two applicability, paragraph two, the first sentence, by adding security fence, comma, after the and before solar panels. Article thirty-seven, section one-point-two, paragraph two, will now read, "Within all zoning districts, the—districts, the security fence, solar panels, and supporting structures of large-scale installation shall not be permitted within three hundred feet of a way, as defined in General Law, Chapter ninety, Section one, unless the natural topographic features of the landscape prevent observation of the solar installation from any portion of the way. The side and rear setbacks shall be no less than one-hundred-and-fifty feet." And by doing that, it'll add an additional twenty to twenty-five feet of, um, a distance from the three hundred and the one-fifty.
Sir, you need to put your amendment—
I haven't written—
Okay.
I signed in at the bottom of my printed name, is that okay? Or do I need to sign it off?
I—so I can read it to everyone, yeah.
Mr. Moderator, you guys are digesting that, can I ask? Can I try to clarify?
Mr. Gasker, sure.
So, Mr. Rizendis, I think what you—what you just did was, you added the word "security fence" inside of the solar bylaw because it wasn't added in, and they were going to solar arrays for the three hundred feet from away, and you're considering the solar, the security fence is part of the array, so you wanted every—everything three hundred feet to the solar—the security fence, including the security fence, is that correct?
Correct, Mr. Gasker. If—if there wasn't a solar array there, there would be no need for a security fence.
Understood.
Town councils, reviewing the amendment, over. So, the benefit of those here, the amendment, so Article thirty-seven, section one dot two, paragraph two, will now read, "With all—within all zoning districts, the security fence," that's added, "solar panels and supporting structures of large-scale installations shall not be permitted within three hundred feet of a way, as defined in General Law, Chapter nine, Section one, unless natural topographic features of the landscape prevent observation of the solar installation from any portion of the way." of solar installation from any portion of the way. The side and rear setbacks shall be no less than a hundred and fifty feet. Planning board, Mr. Chairman?
I understand what Mr. Rizendis is trying to do, but each, we don't have the right to refuse solar fields and installation, state supersedes that, we can make rules, and that's what Mr. Rizendis is trying to do, to make the rules more difficult for solar arrays to be put in, and I respect that. I just think that it takes a lot of discussion between the other members of the planning board, I think it should take more discussion with the residents of the town when it comes to changing something like this. It's just my opinion, I don't know how far it goes. I just think we should have more discussion on it, and we can, and I could put it on the next, you know, on the planning board agenda for the next fall meeting to add that as a change. I just think the town, in our public hearings, the town should have more input on this. I think the planning board should have deeper discussion on this before it's just voted upon without clarification.
Is there any further discussion? Well, we will now vote on the amendment, it only takes a majority vote. All those in favor of amending as I read? Those opposed? The amendment passes without opposition. We will now vote on Article thirty-seven, we're voting on the article now, not the amendment. We're voting on the article as amended. Any discussion? Again, a two-thirds vote, all votes in favor? Those opposed? Article thirty-seven passes by two-thirds with opposition. And now, ladies and gentlemen, at long last, you have no further business, I need a motion to the town.